Welcome, everyone, to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Trustees here in Washington Township, Michigan on July 14, 2021. If you'll all stand and we'll be doing the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. I'd like to remind anyone watching at home, please feel free to email any questions or comments at comments@washingtontwpmi.org. With that, we'll get started. Mr. Bobinski, will you lead us in roll call?
Olson.
Here.
Nicely.
Here.
Pravidi.
Here.
Bobinski is here. Cop.
Here.
Pollard.
Yes.
And Detowski.
Here.
Okay. You see before you the agenda. I'd like to add, I emailed the entire board, I'd like to make 9.6 on the DPW emergency purchases on budgeted radios. Maybe if we could lump it all, this item 9.6.
Under new business?
Yeah, under new business, sorry.
I would like to make a change also. In the consent agenda, I'd like to remove 5.7, the treasurer's report, so we can talk about that separately. And also include, this would be, I guess, 9.7, discussion on ZBA and planning commission processes.
Does that need a second?
Wait a second, what did you say on the last one was?
Discussion on ZBA and PC processes.
And I'd like to make one change, too. Under 5.5, the sheriff report, March, that's in the package, it's from Macomb Township, so I'd like that removed.
Or 7?
9.6 was the emergency budget.
Yep, 9.7 for you.
9.7 was, yeah, that's the discussion.
Does he have a motion for anybody?
Is there, I'll make a motion with the noted changes.
Support it.
Supervisor Pravidi, may I ask a question? Is there any way, I know this is a form call, is there any way for the comments from the audience on agenda items and non-agenda items to be flipped? Is that possible, just so?
Does anyone want to make a motion?
We've got to publish an agenda, we have to follow it, right?
No. He has made a amendment, so I don't speak to it. I'm asking for a group's name.
Oh, okay. Okay, I'll make that motion to allow agenda and non-agenda items for number seven. Is there a second? Okay, motion by Pravidi, seconded by Nicely, for noted changes, oh, wait, we already, wait, wait.
There was already motion on the floor.
Let's vote on that first, and then we'll, sorry. So, that was a motion by me, seconded by Pollard.
Like.
On the noted changes.
Yep.
Roll call, Mr. Bobinski.
Pravidi.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Detowski.
Yes.
Cop.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Nicely.
Yes.
Bobinski is a yes. Sorry, I overstepped your mic, I was talking fast.
Okay, motion passed. Motion by Pravidi, seconded by Nicely, to allow agenda and non-agenda items for both item number seven and item number 10. Roll call.
Pravidi and Nicely, you said?
Yep.
Pravidi.
Yes.
Nicely.
Yes.
Olson.
No.
Bobinski's a no. Cop.
No.
Pollard.
No.
And Detowski.
No.
Okay, motion failed, sorry. You see before you the consent agenda, you are being asked to approve the accounts payable of July 9, 2021, accept the building department monthly report of June 2021, approve the Parks and Rec accounts payable of June 11, June 18, June 16, and June 21. I think that's the table, is it June 26? I don't know, June.
Where are we at, Sam, where are you reading?
The Parks, uh, June 20.
June 25.
Sorry, June 11, June 18, June 25, July 2, and July 9.
Correct.
Parks and Rec. The Board of Trustees minutes of the meeting of June 16 and the special meeting of June 21, 2021, accept the Macomb County Sheriff Department monthly reports for January, February, exclude March, April, and May of 2021. We'll find out what happened with the March report.
Mm-hmm.
Accept the monthly fire department report for June 2021, accept the treasure, oh, accept the Robinson Capital Portfolio Review for May and June 2021, and accept a quarterly review and expense report for Fire and Ambulance Fund, Water and Sewer Fund, Building Fund, and General Fund ending in June 30, 2021.
I'll make the motion to accept.
Support.
Okay, motion by Bobinski, seconded by.
Cop.
No questions. Roll call.
Bobinski is a yes. Cop.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Detowski.
Yes.
Pravidi.
Yes.
Nicely.
Yes.
And Olson.
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Next item is legal counsel. I don't have anything. Okay. Next item is any comments from the audience regarding any agenda items? We'll also do this as the agenda goes on, if anyone wanted to speak now, otherwise, as we go on through the agenda, we'll do it. Okay. Next item is old business, review of trash haulers bids and awards.
Mr. Supervisor.
Yes.
If I could jump in, we pulled the 5.7 off of the consent agenda, when will we review that?
I thought it was 9.7.
No, 5.7. The treasurer's report.
There's two of them.
Oh, yep.
I thought you made it 9.7.
He did make a 9, that was a discussion of the ZBA process, but we didn't say on there where 5.7 was going to move to.
9.8, I'm sorry.
Oh, you want to make it 9.8, that's fine, okay. I can do that. Thank you.
Do we have to revote?
No, it doesn't make any difference whether you do it at the end or you do it now, you're going to get it done.
Doesn't matter, doesn't matter. 9.8's fine.
9.8, okay.
Yep.
Sorry about that.
No problem.
Okay. I know there's been a lot of miscommunication out there about this topic recently. We've had our current provider for several years now, we've done our extensions, so in our main meeting, the board decided to put this out to bid, allowing our current provider and other providers to bid for the project. I'll let Stan, being he ran the project, explain the process, and if anyone has a question.
Yep, so again, we were on a tight timeframe, wanted to get a proposal out there to see what we could get as far as a potential new waste hauler. We sent that out to bid. Attorneys Mr. Seabert and I worked on that contract, sent that information out, it was published, we had four recipients come in with bids, one of them being a non-bid, so the board has in front of them the three people that actually submitted bids with priority, waste management, and GFL being those. So, we had answered some questions that they had, this will give you a sheet explaining what is all going on. I'll explain that there is some difference to what the current contract is. The current contract did have provisions in there in which there was just trash, trash and recycling, trash and waste, and then all of the above added as one. Mr. Seabert and I looked, the only contract that we could find that we had anything on file other than the paper copy was one in which said everything was going to be included in this. So, we made it that everything was coming through with only everyone having recycling, waste, trash, that's all of them, right? Three things. Well, and Stan, to be clear, it's not just the only one we could find, the executed agreement between. Right. GFL and the township is for mixed waste recyclables and yard waste. That is the current contract. So, we got the bids, you have the information in front of you as to how the bids came in as far as price-wise, and then you have notes on there as what also was being provided that was a part of the bid process, and some of those being any discounts or rewards that were being offered, any bulk items, how were those handled, any hazardous waste, electronic and paper shredding events, and any household battery recycling program like we have currently at the township. So, those were all submitted, this is what we came up with on the summary of everything that was submitted. I want to thank them all for doing this. I know I could probably include myself in this, you know, everyone thinks it's just the garbage man that comes in, but this is an industry that has to do a lot of different things to comply with state and federal regulations. Some of those things that they do, some of them, you know, now capture the methane, now they have landfills that have liners in them, so the industry of back when, the day when I remember my parents bought a place up north, of going to the dump and throwing whatever the hell you wanted in there are gone, you know? So, that's what we have in front of you. Our options here today are, we can discuss, we can allow them to come up and talk if they want to, but the bids are what they are, these are the bids, we can reject them all, we can accept someone, or we can go back to the current and seek a one-year extension on the current contract that we have. Is that correct, Mr. Seabert?
I agree, you have a current contract with GFL that will expire on September 30 of this year. The township has an option for a one-year extension, which would be from October 1 to September 30 of 2022. So, if you were to reject all bids, and that's within your discretion, you would continue as if this was not rebid at all, and you would exercise your option with GFL and continue for another year, and then at the end of September 30 of 2022, then you're in a position where for sure then you have to go out and either competitively bid it or negotiate with GFL.
What is the current rate? Or what would the extension rate be?
I don't know what that current extension rate, I don't have that, let me see if I can see it in the contract, because I did bring the current contract. No, the extension one they're saying, is there a difference between?
They were going to keep the same.
They keep the same price, okay.
And so what is that amount?
It's on the current.
It's on this column of the current rate.
So, current, all in would be 50, 54. 50, 54, okay. All right, so the current will be the same as the extension. Thank you.
Look, I'm leaning towards approving it because there are some discounts in there for seniors, veterans, and also there's a discount if you pay it upfront 100%. So, there are some.
Yep, so Mike, I just, if I can interrupt on that, then in the current proposal bid, there is not a, written in there where if you paid upfront, you get one month's off. So, that was not put in there, that was in the previous contract. But the other two discounts, if you're talking strictly what GFL has offered, those are offered by them.
Okay.
And then, let me pull that sheet. So, from our summary there, it shows priority and waste management did not offer any discounts or reward packages. GFL offered a 3% on the seniors, 3% on the veterans, and they do have a rewards program in recycling that is called flusarewards.com, which after reading the original contract, that was already in there, I don't know how well it was utilized, but it was in the previous contract as well. And what does that, what's the benefit of having? So, what you do is you recycle, you record when you send out recycling, and you earn points, and then they have 157 pages, I think, of different discounts on there. The unfortunate thing is it's not sorted, so you can't look, but you have to go through all of them to find out what the discounts are, but again, one of them that I saw on there was like Tubby Subs, you know, a percentage off coupon type thing, so. You and I could use a Tubby Sub. I like Tubby Subs. Yep, I did see a couple of the people here that put in bids.
If, I don't know if any of the, if any would like to come up, and if the board has any questions for them. Or you can stand at the podium, thanks.
If you can state your name and address.
Good evening, everybody, Dan Van A, I'm with Priority Waste, I live at 22419 Milner Street in St. Croix Shores. With the Priority Waste bid, the comprehensive that we put together, there are no discounts, but the rate that we had provided, even with discounts from other competitors, we would still be lower. We would, are including, of course, the household hazardous waste, the e-waste, and the battery recycling programs, I would say, as similar as it would possibly be to the current programs. We have 27 residential trucks that are out on the road every day, we have 160 employees that work on the streets extremely hard in heat and rain and flooding, as we've all experienced recently, and with our bid, we would take great care of Washington Township to make sure that all of the residents, family members, friends, and others that we don't know, we get to know, and we take care of everything as if it is our own. We take pride in the service that we provide, we make sure that when we lay our hat down at the end of the day, we're happy with what we've provided, but always looking to be better. In three years and five months, we've sold, we've signed seven municipalities, two of them being in Macomb County, New Baltimore, and the city of Utica. We have three in Wayne County, which is Westland, Grozeal, and Hamtramck, and we have two up in Lapeer, in North Branch and Dryden. Recently, we were awarded Gibraltar and Wayne as well, but contract is still being drafted, and we'll sign that soon. My role is to make sure that the service goes off without a hitch, there are millions of moving parts every day, not only on our trucks, but with the residents of Washington Township, and my job is to make sure that the relationship is taken care of, that everybody here is happy, and that at the end of the day, all of your residence materials are gone. And in regards to our bid, we believe that it's very competitive, you'll see, it's, we do have alternate bids as well, if you review those with a discount for a longer initial term, and they, to improve recycling efforts, since it is an à la carte program currently with the separated options, we're offering a recycling container to anybody that needs one, knowing that this program is now going to be offered to everybody paying that same rate. So, with that, we feel it's fair, and it's also great for our environment to make sure that recycling is utilized, it's easy to utilize, and your residents can take advantage of that.
So, Deanna, I just want to make one statement. So, I didn't get this out to the board until late, because I wanted to make sure that it was reviewed several times, my staff and myself reviewed, looked, and when we did our reading, and maybe we lost it, because there's a lot of material to read, but I did not see anything in the proposal that specifically stated the hazardous waste, electronic recycling, and the battery program. So, I don't know if it was in there and we didn't catch it, but, or maybe the sheets we got was missing, I don't know, but if that is in there, I did not see it, and my staff did not see it when we were compiling this to put this together.
Yeah, in the, I feel like I'm not talking into it.
We can hear you.
In the proposal form, there is no mention to list out household hazardous waste, e-waste, electronic waste, or, sorry, shredding, it's not listed in there, so maybe what is an oversight to not specifically label that, but in your proposal specifications, it's mentioned as a requirement to be provided at no additional cost.
Okay.
So, yeah, we did not list it, but it would be included.
Does anyone have any questions?
I do, can you tell me who owns Priority Waste?
Todd Stamper is in the crowd, Todd Stamper is our CEO.
And this is a local, local company, right?
Yes, we're Michigan-based, we started three and a half, three, almost three and a half years ago with four guys and four trucks going out just trying to work hard and make a name for ourselves, so now, obviously, we've grown quite a bit. We're, all of our money is in Michigan, our corporate office is in Clinton Township, we have five yards in and around southeast Michigan, always expanding that as we expand our service territory and to make it easy for service.
I have a question, sir, two of them. Number one, you have a, is this an option up to 10 years, that we can take any number of years we wish, or is it all or nothing?
So, the original bid form is for three plus three, three initial term, and then a three renewal term. We put in an alternate bid, which is a five plus five with a discount for those, for that longer term. Everything else in the bid specifications stay the same, all of the services remain the same, it would just be a discount for a longer-term contract.
What is the discount, because I see the price going up every year?
Price does go up, the initial, the initial rate is a 10 cent drop in price, sorry, 30 percent, 30 cent decrease in price over the quarter for the residents. It's still a savings for everybody currently, based on your resident's current spend, I believe they're spending, even with annual discount pay, they're at 1595, 1585, we're at 1475. So, the residents that paid annually, that got that benefit for paying annually, they're going to see even bigger savings by going with Priority Waste.
Okay, all right, thank you on the first question. The second question is, we all know that Facebook is full of truth, and there's no rumors, and there's no lies on there. Why are they attacking Priority Waste? I've never heard of you guys, so I have no firsthand experience at all, I have an open mind sitting here. Why are they attacking you guys on Facebook?
I'd love to know that answer myself. I know that there were some postings a few weeks ago, and I don't, I'm not going to comment on the individual, because I don't know him. It seems odd, the timing of the postings with the, with the bid being public, or not even public yet, to them that all of the information was shared, so he knows more than most do in regard to the bid. What I would say is.
He knew more than the board did at that point.
Yeah.
So, I was curious how he got that information.
What I would say is that if you call our references, you know, Gus in Utica, or Marcia in New Baltimore, Kathy in Hamtramck, Derek in Grozeal, anybody, they're going to rave about our service, because like I mentioned before, we put our, we put our bootstraps up every morning, we lay our hats down every night, and we make sure that everybody's taken care of. In the floods that we all recently over, you know, had to deal with, we're taking over 100 more tons from every municipality that we're servicing, because the weights are heavy loads, and we're working as long as we can on extended days on the weekends when we normally don't. So, to comment back on, or to come back to why people are bashing us, I don't know. Mistakes will always happen in an industry that has 1,000 hands-on product, at the end of the day, we'll own a mistake that will happen, and we'll make sure that it's fixed, and like I said, it's not something that we obviously control, but me being in your community, if you look at New Baltimore, for example, I manage their Facebook pages, if there's ever an issue that arises, I'm right there answering questions, helping residents with their concerns, because again, at the end of the day, I don't feel great if somebody doesn't feel great about us, so.
Well, if you're not making mistakes, as somebody told me many, many years ago, if you're not making mistakes, you're not doing anything.
Correct, yes.
So, I appreciate what you said, thank you.
Can I add on to what Dan said there, and what you had sent, Dan? How are you handling the storm flood damage? Is that an additional cost above and beyond what the normal would be, or are you just saying, you know what, we understand this is a crisis, and we're balancing up and taking care of it for the residents?
So, each municipality is different. Westland, for example, is handling it through their Department of Public Works, where their employees are loading up roll-off containers, or providing them the roll-off containers at the contracted prices that we have for them. Of course, you know, we're not getting a discount from landfills, so we can only do what we can do, but like I said, we're showing up when they need us, as they need us, and understanding that it's an emergency, and we have to come to the table and answer those questions. It's, you know, with New Baltimore, they had significantly less damage in their community, anything that was put out the curb, we picked up without an issue. And Hamtramck, another community that was impacted slightly less than Westland, again, we showed up, we picked up, and we got out of their community as fast as possible so that rodents and different things didn't happen. In Utica, there was an area that had flooding, we sent extra crews there, we came back later in the day, because more was brought out, and we just picked it up as the normal part of service. There are different ways to look at everything, but at the end of the day, I'm very proud of our guys, I just got a text from our supervisor, they're done in New Baltimore, and they were working extremely hard in what we're dealing with, with rain and great humidity, so.
Where would you say you're at with all those communities as far as being completed with this storm?
All of them are done except for Westland, Westland has still, they were hit the worst out of all of our municipalities. There's still some material that's being brought out, but anything that's on the curb generally is gone. They have one area that was a collection site, is empty, and they have their public works yard that is now, you know, empty, but occasionally is getting filled with their employees filling it up with other materials.
I have another question on the cans, there's a lot of us that owned our own, our cans, we had bought them already. You have issue with us continuing to use those?
Absolutely not. So, any of your trash cans that you have, or recycling cans that you have, we will service those, we offered, like I mentioned before, the recycling container, the 65-gallon recycling container, we want that to be a springboard to increase the recycling efforts, so by providing that, anybody that wasn't taking part in recycling that now will be or can be, get a can at no charge. If they have, if they want to upgrade their can, we do have cans available, but if they buy one from another store, from anybody else, we'll service that as well.
Thank you. So, add on to that, because I've seen other things in other proposals, how do you handle additional baggage of garbage? So, let's say my one container's full, and I set another one on top, or I set some off to the side, do you still pick those up, or is that considered stuff that you're not going to handle?
If we did that, Stan, we'd be in a hell of a lot of problems.
Well, I know, there's some people that don't want to use trash cans in general, and I've got several neighbors that way, so.
If it's at the curb, we pick it up. Obviously, bulk is different, it's defined with three large bulk items, and bulk items are loosely defined, there's just some gray area, but you have a mattress and a box spring, we consider that one, a chair and an ottoman, we consider that one, but yeah, if there's a bag outside of a trash can, or a bag next to, or my grandmother lives in Washington Township, she may not even use a trash can, because she has one bag a week, we will get out and we will pick it up and move on to the next home.
So, like an old dresser and old sofa, no problem with that?
Nope, as long, as long as it's not exceeding three, and even if it exceeds three, we just ask that you call and give us a heads up, so that if we need extra hands to help lifting the material, we'll figure that out, a couch, we always have a supervisor in the municipalities every time we're in there with the truck to help out, or dispatch a truck to help out if needed, if a resident calls, we can schedule that, so we have, again, multiple hands ready for when there's a larger bulk item that may require.
Okay, so a courtesy call, fair enough.
Yep.
Dan, you said you've got 27 trucks already, if this is incremental business to you, and I assume that it is, would you have to go out and purchase new equipment in order to support Washington Township?
No, sir, we have some already in line for purchase, we had two actually just arrive a week or so ago, Todd and Vince would know better on that, but we would be utilizing current fleet and anything that we've reserved with. We were proactive, knowing that we had some, you know, potential large municipalities like Washington Township available and ready, we called our trucking company and reserved a few, so when and if we were very lucky to be selected, we could have them up here and ready for service. If we ever needed one, we have a great partner in Ohio as a rental option to fulfill a service while we wait on our permanent vehicles to arrive as well.
With the equipment, the current equipment that you have, could you do Washington Township in one day, or is it something that we'd have to extend over to?
It could not all be done in one day, I believe it's currently a five-day service, and we would just maintain the current service law.
Yeah, it's all mapped out, Gary.
On that, so again, back to trucks and things, looked at three different brochures, your equipment, I'm taking it is double manned, because of the way things are picked up, where some of them may be strictly mechanical, only one operator? Is that be correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, the yard waste and compost waste would be double manned, because the individual in the back that would be loading material, recycling and trash, because they're containerized, may not have a helper, but sometimes they do, it just depends, truthfully, on, as we get to know the municipalities, we realize that some require extra help, because they have more extra materials outside containers, but we generally start with a helper, just to make sure everything goes off smoothly, and then adjust back if we can. to make sure everything goes off smoothly and then adjust back if, if we can.
Yes.
Sorry, is there anyone else?
I think GFL is right there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
I hope you can see me over the phone. Don Barretta with GFL Environmental Services, 6200 Elm Ridge in Sterling Heights, Michigan. I'm here tonight with Joe Munam who's also from GFL Corporation or Environmental Services. You all know that we've been your provider of essential services for the past seven years. We've enjoyed, we've enjoyed all seven years and we, we would look forward to either the, the option in the existing contract for the one year, but in our proposal, if you go to, if you looked at our, our first tab is where we have everything listed.
So, they don't have that, we have a summary sheet on what's all going on here, Don?
But I mean, in, in there, we've listed everything and it is, we, we were lucky enough to be able to, to lower the, the monthly unit rate. We still have the senior discount, we've added the veterans discount this time. We also, if you looked at that first tab, we have unlimited bulk service like, like we have provided right along. And our rewards program still stands as it is, we'd be glad to continue that with, with the township. So, we are, we are here to answer any questions that you may have. We've been, we're in, we do, my priority, final priority has only been around for a short period of time, we've been a little bit longer. We have 78 or 80 contracts in and around the area. We do most of Macomb County. The one thing that, that we would bring up is that the, we bill a number of, of townships. And that's, that's the quarterly and, and now the annual billing. So, that's something that we're really familiar with in, in Washington Township. The residents don't have to go through, you know, signing up with another company if we're lucky enough to be awarded a contract. But we have all the services that we, that we previously provided you. We, we have unlimited trash pickup, unlimited yard waste pickup, we're going to maintain the cart program that we currently have and we've continued since we took over from Republic Services, we've continued to take care of the carts. Even some of the older waste management in, in Republic Cars, as they get bad, we replace them. We don't, we don't bother charging anybody for that and we'll continue to, to supply the 65 gallon recycling containers or the 18 gallon bins if, if the resident chooses to do that. We service both automated and semi-automated because it is unlimited trash, yard waste and recycling service. So, anything that gets put out, you know, we have been picking it up. We very rarely get any complaints from Washington Township. We have a supervisor that's in here. He is the last line of defense in here, it's his responsibility to make sure that everything is cleaned up and picked up. And if there's any bulk items, especially something big like a piano or an old cast iron bathtub or sink, we have bulk trucks available with 350 pound lift gates on the back end to get those picked up and get them out of the, out of the township the same day. We have no objection to continue the five-day schedule. If you wanted to look at changing it and reducing the number of days, we'd be glad to work with the township officials to do that. So, I'd like to answer any questions that you may have and-
So, I'd make a comment, so, worked with you several times on hazardous waste, paper shredding, all that, it's a pleasure working with you. Your crew does a great job over there in servicing our customers and getting their stuff out of their cars and out of harm's way and not putting things into landfills or, and recycling. There were some struggle years in the beginning, as again, expected because we went from multiple waste haulers to single waste haulers and they got used to or had friends with or I don't know. But there were years of struggles, but you guys did work with the township. And again, I, I see that it must be something that changed in the industry because I do see that you have regional managers, other managers. Today, we had an incident where one of the sides of the building forgot to take out recycling yesterday. They made a phone call and with an hour or two, your guys were out there to pick that stuff up. So, I said, it's, it's been good. I've had those same kind of incidents with my house, somehow it gets forgotten, missed, whatever, and I do put it out before 7 o'clock.
Yeah. We're in the township, that, that's his job, he's not supposed to leave until all streets are covered. Matter of fact, we have one of our senior supervisors lives right over here off of-
Don't give it his address, they'll be after him if something goes wrong.
Matter of fact, I think he ran Washington Township at, early on.
Okay.
He's, you know, whoever's here, we make sure we get that all done. In our, in our, I mean, we do, we probably do 30 electronic shredding and hazardous waste days a year. And you, you folks are lucky because you get the, the two shredder, shredding days, which are becoming better than hazardous waste days and the one hazardous waste. And that is all defined in, in our tab one where we put in there that that, that is included in our proposal.
Yep, and one thing I noticed on here that I've not seen in any other contract and I don't utilize because I don't use real Christmas trees anymore, is I appreciate the fact that you do try to recycle those, those and you pick those up and it's for a period of time from after Christmas until the 30th of July, if, for those who want to keep their, I mean, excuse me, January. Those really appreciate if you took it up in July and January.
We do get Christmas trees in July.
Well, yeah, but they weren't in a house, they were just chopped down and thrown over.
We start picking them up the day, the day after Christmas and we pick them up through the middle of January.
And I, I've seen them thrown in parks and other areas, so I'm glad that there's the service that does pick those things up as well, so.
Now, this is still for a three plus three? That's how you originally set the bet out?
Yep, yep, that's how it was set out, three plus three, but then they had the option to submit anything else they wanted to. We don't have to look at those other things, but if they wanted to submit something differently, they could.
I do know with the last shredding event, the trustees, Sam and yourself, we were out there for that and that was the best shredding event this township ever had. Do you remember the numbers on it, how many people?
36, something like that?
You got almost 600 people.
It was huge. That was your clicker, ours was different.
We don't. But I, I think the one year, we were pushing close to eight, 800 homes, the one time. Most, most of the time, we're somewhere between 3 and 500, which is, which is not bad at a community of this size.
Yeah, considering coming out of COVID, this is, that was pretty good.
Yeah.
That was pretty good. Great event.
And it ran smoothly and we didn't have blockups.
Residents need those, so.
Well, I'll ask the same-
We've learned to really stock the people in there. We want to get everybody in and out. Somebody waits for a minute or two and it's, it's ruined their day, so we'd like to get them in and get them out.
Okay, I'll ask the same question. Who owns GFL?
Well, GFL, and Joe can, can speak a little bit about that, but GFL is, is now publicly traded on the New York Stock Exchange, New York Stock Exchange, Exchange and the Toronto Stock Exchange, Exchange. So, we're, we're a Delaware, we're a Delaware corporation and we're authorized to, to do business in this, in the state of Michigan.
And where is your customer service located?
Customer service is over 26999 Central Park Boulevard, Suite 200 in Chesterfield or Southfield. It's right over there off of 6, 696 and Southfield Road. Evergreen, I'm sorry.
That's one of the-
Well, the reason I'm asking about your customer service is I did have a problem personally with getting a bill paid. I mailed it, noticed that it wasn't cashed by you guys for quite a while. Went, I called your company, I was on hold for a long, long time. I finally left a message and my, my call was never returned. So, I ended up double paying my bill.
When, when was this?
March.
This year?
Yeah.
The one thing that, that, that I can tell you what happened is that during 2020, we, we weren't hit really too bad in our customer service with the virus. But this year, for whatever reason, the beginning of the year for the first three or four months, we had a number of our, our customer service reps, I think it was almost 30%? 30% that were out with, with the virus, so. But they're fully staffed now, most of them are back working and there should not be any delays if, if anybody calls for whatever reason.
I have a financial question here and it's just glaring at me when I look at this chart and unfortunately you don't have a copy of it, but what it says is for the first year, the quarterly rate is 4785 and we're currently paying 5054. How do you, how do you rationalize that?
You mean lowering the rate?
Yeah.
Well, we, we did, we did, we, we know the, the township intimately. We, we've, we've worked out all the cakes, we've, you know, we've improved our, improved our productivity. And, and there are a couple of things that aren't, that aren't in our proposal this year that were in last year. And so that, that, between the two of that, those, we, we were able to look at and reduce our rate, I think it was about 5.6%. And I know that you had brought mention about the annual payment incentive, which, which is no longer there. We figured we would rather give the, you know, a reduction to everybody and, and just not for the people that choose to pay it annually.
Okay, and then lastly, the senior discount and the veteran discount, are they, is that an either/or or is it you get both if you're senior and a veteran?
If you're a senior at a event like me, you get them both.
Okay, thank you.
I'm joining. Both clubs.
It's going to be harder to get old though.
Any other questions? Is anyone here from Waste Management? Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Thanks, Dan.
Oh, yeah, I know if Joe, yeah, yeah, no, that's fine.
He talks a lot longer than I do.
Oh, great.
Good evening. My name's Joseph Munam, I am the Director of Government Affairs and Public Relations for GFL Environmental Michigan. Address 26999 Central Park Boulevard, Suite 200, Southfield, Michigan, 48076. I'll pray the longest thing I say tonight. We are very, very proud of the service that we've been able to provide the residents of Washington Township down these, through these past seven years. And a couple of points that we want to make because, you know, we've had a lot of challenges. The whole world has had a lot of challenges in the past year, pandemics and more recently around here is floods, storms. GFL is large enough and scalable enough to address all of that. If you look at a map, our service map particularly in Macomb County, we serve Ray Township to the east, Shelby Township to the south, Macomb Township to the southeast, Rochester Hills to the southwest. We have a very large yard in Sterling Heights that serves here. We are able to scale our service up and down and if there were any deficiencies, we're able to like move trucks around because we have that ability. Well, our name is Green for Life and because we really are committed to making sure that we are looking for a green future for the world. You know, Don was speaking of reasons why we were able to lower our rates. Well, compared to when we first bid this out, then we didn't have a landfill. We didn't have a material recovery facility which sorts all the single stream recycling. We didn't have compost yards. Today, we have all of that, so we're able to, again, deliver services more efficiently. And we are a recycler, we have skin in the game when it comes to that. We make sure that those items are collected and sorted. We, and we have yards in, in Salem Town, compost yards in Salem Township and in Lapeer Township because we want to make sure that we're taking all that yard waste and turning it into compost that we then sell and, you know, people are using in their yards. So, we are very, very much committed to making sure that we're offering green solutions and we're capable of doing that because we're large enough to do that and we are vertically integrated. So, we thank you very much for the opportunity to address you this evening and we look forward to continuing to serve the community. Thank you.
I have a question for you, sir.
Yes, sir.
So, regarding the recycling, so currently you have it and I don't know how you operate and know how, which house you're picking up at, but is the task of being recycling put on the consumer so they know when they did it? Or is there a way that you could be that person as you're picking up saying, yes, they recycled today? Instead of putting that onto the consumer, which then gets busy and says, I don't, didn't do that, or can they go back dating five days and, five weeks and say, yes, I, I did that? I don't, I don't know how that whole program works.
You're talking about for rewards for recycling?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I believe that that's somewhat on the honor system, right, Don? That they, yes, that they can report that basically at any time.
But simply because you're not signed up for it, you don't get the rewards then?
You're speaking to the mic, please? There, there are a few communities that, that require us to keep track of everybody that recycles. And that, that goes into retrofitting your trucks with equipment that, that can read the serial number or the RFID tag on the cart to the address. Most communities don't do that. We keep track of the recycling, we, we look at the participation rate. And, and that could vary anytime, depends on the time of the year and the fluctuation, the time of the year and the fluctuation and the volumes that we pick up. Most communities, you know, most people will put a recycling container out about every other week. Some people are around at, at 38 to 40, to 42%, but a lot of them, it's, we find in some of the, the better communities, their participation rate gets up over to around 50%. So, we, we know how many homes, we know how many homes we pick up in any given month, but only the ones that, that have asked for the system that where we can track who picks it up. And that goes back to an old program called Recycle Bank that I, I don't even know if that's around anymore. But that is something that can be looked at, at a later date if that's something that, you know, township wanted to do.
I'm one of those people that you explained, I don't do it every single week because I don't feel like I'm lazy, don't want to drag the extra canister out there. Because it's not full, so I know I can manage another week without doing so.
Yeah, and, and in our rewards program, it's, it's on the honor system. If, if you recycle, you go out there, you, if you're, if you're set up, you put your password in there and just, just go to, I recycle today and then you're eligible for what's in the system.
Okay. Thank you.
One more thing, if I may. You previously inquired about trucks with, and as with many things right now, I mean, if you've been by many auto dealerships, you see that they're, what they have on the yard is limited inventory. There's trouble with delivery of vehicles across, you know, anybody who builds vehicles at this point. It's just, it affects everybody, it affects us. However, this is something that would not impact us in Washington Township because we already have the trucks that are servicing your community at this point. So, you know, should you decide to award the bid to us tonight, you will find that the service is seamless and we own our entire fleet. Thank you.
Any comments from the audience regarding this topic?
Is Waste Management here?
Yeah. Is Waste Management here?
I didn't see any representatives that had come previously, so.
Thank you. Any comments on the email? Any other questions or comments from the board?
I'd, I'd like to see the rest of the bid documents. Can we get those and maybe review these over the next two weeks or, you know, and bring it back to the next meeting? Is that something we could possibly do?
It would give us time to implement if we made a change, do you think, Bob? Again, I, I don't know.
Like August 11th or something like that?
The existing, the existing contract runs until September 30th, so we're in the mid-July, your, your next meeting is when?
August 11th.
August 11th.
All right, so August 11th, if you award it, if you keep, if you keep GFL, then there's no, there's no hurdle to file.
Yeah, there's no big deal, but everything else-
If you were to change, then you've got August, September. You got six weeks, eight weeks.
Is that enough time?
Never been in the garbage business, I have no idea.
I guess we would ask that question to Priority.
Good evening, everybody. Todd Stamper, Priority Waste CEO, 42822 Garfield Road, Clinton Township, Michigan. As far as trucking goes, if you guys need the time, we have six sidearms set aside and three rear packers at our location. We own two transfer stations in Detroit and a yard in Detroit and they're sitting there, they're ready to go. We constantly order trucks. To Dan's point about rentals or anything like that, we have no issues with our equipment. Our suppliers that supply us, we haven't seen any, any hiccups in that chain. So, we're currently- So we're currently provided, we could, you know, theoretically put a crew together within a few days. So if you need time, and if there's, you know, you need to go through it as a board, feel free, we'll be ready. We started in Baltimore within two weeks. Ham Trammack, the hauler that was there previously, dropped the ball and quit, and we picked that up within a day. So i- it's not a problem. Whatever you guys need, feel free to take the time you need to do it right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And yes, that's no problem, I could get you.
Pardon?
I could get you the full information from all of them. That's, that's no problem.
That way the board can review it.
Is that a motion?
That would be my motion, yes.
To table for two weeks?
To table for the next meeting, which would be August 11th.
I'll support that.
To give us a chance to look at full documents.
Assuming that the clerk can get us all the information. I don't know how many volumes and trees are we gonna kill?
Yeah, we've got lots of folders and stuff, so we're good. So that was Dattowski with the motion, right?
Yeah, I supported it, yep.
Okay, so motion by Dattowski, seconded by Cop, to have the clerk make copies of all the binders?
Don't be adding to the mountain. I wrote down what I needed to say.
And they get our dinner reservation, and...
And we'll table this to the August 11th meeting. Are there any questions on the motion? Otherwise, roll call.
Dattowski?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Polat?
Yes.
Babinski is yes. Pravidi?
Yes.
Nicely?
Yes.
And Olson?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Thank you both, Priority and GFL, for coming out.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next item is 9.1. I'm gonna ask our chief Tyrell to help explain this one. This is a request to purchase the Stryker ProCare program.
Chief, I didn't see you sitting back there. Good evening.
I, I blend into the corner very nicely. Good evening, Mr. Supervisor and Board of Trustees. Again, it's a pleasure to see you. Thanks for being here and working through this agenda. I think I'm before you with a, a pretty light agenda item, something fairly simple to weigh in on. If you've had an opportunity to read through the board packet, I think it's, it's pretty inclusive. It gives you a whole lot of information on a pretty simple request. To summarize, you know, we have four advanced life support paramedic transporting ambulances. Within those ambulances, we use a Stryker power cot and power load system to safely, secure, and transport our patients across the township. Historically, or two years ago, we, the previous board covered under a Stryker preventive maintenance and extended warranty program, the four power cots and the two power loads. Essentially, what we have are the cots that we haul in and out of the, the homes and, and transport patients with, and then the power load is permanently anchored into our advanced life support ambulances. It connects to the cot and draws it in. We need to add two of those into this extended warranty program. Those are purchased at a later time with the cycling of ambulance remounts and 12-year manufacturer warranty. The timing just wasn't right, and the equipment wasn't there for us to cover it all at one time under one seven-year agreement. So tonight, I'm before you, asking for you to, you know, look at a request to add those two power loads that are already in our ambulances. They're out of the 12-month manufacturer's warranty, I believe last May. We're asking for a five-year agreement. The five-year agreement is $12,982.50, and we want to pay that annually over a five-year period with an annual billing amount of $2,596.50, you know, beginning with the execution of the agreement, if you so agree. And I'm here for any other questions, but I...
What's the life of those power, power loads?
You know, it's fairly new product. We're two years into those. Those were a driven mandate out of ambulance specs. It's a great question. We're, we're amateurizing, if that's the right word, accountants in the room, over a 10-year period on that capital asset purchase. Another reason why I didn't really want to extend out too much farther, so we're still in this exploratory, like, I guess, product world with this stuff.
I think it's a good thing to have them, because I'm not sure what the cost would be to have someone come out or, you know, get them repaired. And also, I think it saves workers' comp claims.
Yep, it's all, you're spot on, sir. It's all spelled out, you know, summarized in your packet. We're, with this extended warranty preventive maintenance program, we're, we're protecting over $180,000, $188,000 worth of capital assets, I believe, is what's in the packet. Basically, to replace it, it's a, it's about a $21,000 stretcher or cot, and it's about a $24,000 power load component. Together, it's quite a bit of money times four. So you, you've got the HR side of things and the workman's comp side of things, that we're already seeing a reduction in back injuries. But know this as well, they're all battery operated. So when you're in certain industry, industries, and it's a battery operated, it's not like we can go to Home Depot and buy a DeWalt battery for 100 bucks. They are extremely costly, they're high-tech, and this, this PM and warranty covers our batteries and all of, you know, really bumper-to-bumper, if you will.
Are these rechargeable batteries, then?
Yes, yep.
Are they recharged through that truck?
They are.
So you can plug the truck in and it takes the power through there?
Yes.
Perfect.
Correct.
Because I think, again, the annual maintenance, we're more than offset workers' comp claim, and that's why I think it's really important that we have the...
I believe you're right. I believe we will see that in the long run.
Any comments from the audience? Or question? Any other board question? Otherwise...
Motion to approve.
Okay, I was just gonna say, I'll second that. So, motion by Olson, seconded by Pravidi for the purchase of the Stryker ProCare program for $12,982.50. If there's no other questions, roll call.
Olson?
Yes.
Pravidi?
Yes.
Nicely?
Yes.
Babinski is yes. Cop?
Yes.
Dattowski?
Yes.
And Polat?
Yes.
Thank you, chief. Motion passed. Thank you. Next item is 9.2, the MS4 Permit Public Notice. I'll have Mike Kozak come up here to explain.
Yeah, it should be on the go-to meeting. Hey, look at that. We'll see if it works. Good evening, everybody. Is it there?
I see it up here.
Yep. Me on that screen. Okay. I have a very brief, hopefully, presentation for you guys tonight as a part of the public notice period for your MS4 permit, which is essentially dealing with stormwater systems that you own and operate, as well as administration, observation, long-term maintenance associated with other developed stormwater systems in the township. There's a public notice period that has to occur, so this will be posted, a link to your permit will be posted on your website, along with the actual permit on the Eagle website. We thought it was a good opportunity to just kind of update, there's some new faces on the board, to everyone to understand what this permit is and some of the requirements that fall to your staff and to township officials with the administration of it. So, like I said, hopefully it will be brief, and we'll all learn something new tonight. So this is a program that was created deriving from the Clean Water Act, passed in the 1970s by the federal government, which, you know, kind of passed down responsibilities to eliminate pollutants in our, our waterways and watersheds, down to states and then on to local municipalities. This is a, a different version of other permits, and it's taken different forms over time, and with a lot of input from the municipalities, and quite frankly, some pushback from the municipalities. That permit has gotten more refined over the years to where we are today. As we know, Michigan's full of fresh water surrounding us completely. Everywhere we look, we see fresh water, which is a great resource, obviously, but also a huge opportunity to pollute that in a negative way, and a huge responsibility to take care of it and prevent that. This is particularly an issue where development occurs. As anyone knows, and we've seen in the past few weeks, paving of, of otherwise non-paved areas and pervia, or pervious areas simply leads to faster runoff, more water coming during rain events, and no place for that water to go. So this is obviously a permit that really applies to developed communities. There are some thresholds related to population and urban areas that may push one municipality from having to administer this or not. And again, very simply, it, it was developed to help manage, I'm gonna, my screen's a little cut off, so I'm gonna attempt to be able to read that, but basically, we're, we're talking about developed areas like Washington Township. So MS4 simply stands for, the M is municipal, meaning a city, township, village, even county. The S4 is a separate storm sewer system, so we're not dealing with sanitary here, we're dealing just with storm sewer. Examples of stormwater management devices that you would commonly see, retention, detention basins, roadside ditches, farmers' ditches, catch basin inlets that drain a parking lot or a paved area, yard basins that are out in grass areas adjacent to that, but basically in developments, and then a discharge into a waterway or a body of water. If anyone has a question while I'm talking, quickly, please just leave your hands in, we'll pause and try to answer them. It's called a separate system because it's not connected to a sanitary sewer. There are, you know, that, in Washington Township, for example, those are two separate systems completely. Your sanitary sewer goes either to the wastewater treatment plant that we just recently started up, or downstream to the Detroit Wastewater Recovery Facility all the way downriver.
Mike, so, south of us, Detroit area, are those two systems integrated, though?
So it depends. Older communities, City of Detroit and a lot, and 98% of the City of Detroit, communities like Inkster, they have a lot of combined sewers, where, yes, you will flush your toilet in your house, it goes out a pipe, and it goes into a sewer that also takes road drainage.
Roseville's also one of the cities that...
Yeah, and, you know, some communities have spent tens and hundreds of millions of dollars trying to separate that. Some communities, like Washington Township, are simply newer, and we had learned our lesson and decided that the savings by building just one big pipe was not worth keeping those two systems combined, so from the very beginning, they stayed separate, which is obviously a much better result. So, like we just said, those areas that are combined sewer systems, they don't have an MS4 permit because they don't have a strictly separate storm sewer system. They're governed under a whole lot of other rules. And like I said earlier, rural developments that may have stormwater management structures but not the population to generate it, don't have to go through all these hoops. You guys, you hit that threshold, you have to get this permit. Clean Water Act is, is what Congress has empowered the EPA to basically enforce these regulations. That's passed down through each state, and in, in our case, that's the Michigan Department of Environmental, Great Lakes, and Energy, Eagle, formerly the DEQ, formerly the DNR, formerly the DEQ. Before that, it's Eagle now, hopefully it stays that way for a while. They're the ones that administer this permit, and they're the ones that your staff works with closely to make sure we're doing what we need to do. It's effectively an MPDES permit, which is a National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permit. Fancy way of, you know, there's just multiple names for these different things. Permit's issued for five years. Same thing, like I said, it's, it's either an MS4 permit or a stormwater permit, these are kind of all colloquial terms for, for what we're talking about here. You have to, we have created a stormwater management plan as a part of this MS4. The permit, submittal, is just a series of different, we use tabs, but different steps to meet the various requirements of that permit. It's a lot of paperwork, it's a lot of crossing Ts and dotting Is, and making sure staff is doing what they're supposed to be doing, and making sure that our ordinances have all the information that's required. But again, the ultimate goal is to put the systems in place that prevent pollution from reaching stormwater systems. There's six minimum control measures that I'll just read through real quick, and then we'll talk a little bit more in depth, but public education outreach, kind of what we're doing now, public participation and involvement, illicit discharge detection elimination, trying to keep sanitary sewer out of the storm sewer system, construction site erosion, trying to keep undeveloped sites, or sites that are under development, excuse me, from their runoff going into a storm sewer system without being filtered first. Post-construction stormwaters management, those are the facilities and stormwater management devices that we talked about earlier. And then pollution prevention's just long-term, good housekeeping, good maintenance. So public education, we're trying to teach people what we're going through right now, trying to get people to understand exactly why it's important to protect their watershed, why it's important not to dump paint down the catch basin in front of their house, and why they shouldn't connect their downspouts to their sanitary system and vice versa. So to do this, you have to create various devices and, and notifications to help keep your residents informed and educated about stormwater management. This is done through, obviously, multiple pieces of information that are on your webpage, which we'll show you a little bit in a minute, informational flyers, brochures, presentations like this. You guys are a member of the Clinton River Watershed that comes before this board every year for renewing that membership. I don't know, I think $2,500, $5,000, I don't know what you pay, but it's a price, it's, it's every dollar is worth it for the information that the DPW staff get from Clinton River Watershed to use as education. I know when there are township events, they'll have the table set up with the boards there that kind of help educate everyone from little kids up to senior citizens about what a watershed is, how it works, and why it's important to take care of it. So that's definitely a price worth paying. The current permit, as I said earlier, will be a link on your website that'll take you to the Eagle site, and it's actually, that's where it's hosted and observable by the public. Just to give you a sense, if you haven't been on the website, but there's all kinds of pages, this one's my favorite, stick to the three Ps. That's pee, poo, and toilet paper. That's what should go down the toilet only, I just think that's great. And then obviously links to the Clinton River Watershed themselves, and like I said, that's an invaluable resource, and there's, there's countless pieces of information that people can access. Public participation and involvement, so getting residents involved about stormwater reduction and management activities. This would be various workshops that you may host. You guys have a septic and well workshop that you've done for the past five or six years, every year, that helps educate people that have those facilities on how to operate and maintain them properly, and how not to pollute our waterways. There's that same graphic from earlier, but again, we're trying to just get that information out there. It's both a requirement of the permit, and it's, you know, just good practices as a, as a community. Illicit discharge detection and elimination, so like we said, we're trying to keep sanitary sewer out of the storm sewer, very simple. This example would be someone has their sewer in their house connected to the storm sewer in the back. Someone has a, a situation where sanitary sewer might be overflowing at a, a septic field itself that then is adjacent to a drain, and you have that runoff going right into the waterway. Illicit substances would be septic tank discharge, like I just said, laundry, washwater, paint, automobile fog, which is fats, oils, and grease that would come out of a restaurant. Your, your plumbing code and your DPW all require oil-water separator outside in most cases, almost all cases now, prior to discharge and connection to the sanitary system. Again, we're just putting pieces in place to ensure that those two things don't co-mingle, and to make sure that everything's operated like it should be, and, and again, best management practices. This is probably the biggest takeaway of the whole discussion. If it goes down the storm sewer, eventually it's going to go into a river stream, a lake, something without treatment. You know, it's the old painted-on-the-curb, the picture of the fish, this drains to the lake or to the river. It's eventually gonna make its way there. As more and more development occurs, there's less green space, there's less natural ways to filter those pollutants out. The water moves a lot quicker from the sky into a catch basin and right into the waterway. So anything we can do to slow it down, like detaining it for a little while before it discharges, filtering it by letting it go through some sort of rain garden or some sort of natural bio-swell, all of that's gonna help to keep that stormwater as clean as possible.
Mike, can I, can I back you up a little bit to reporting? You're talking about septics, so we have a large majority of our areas, septics, right? So when home sales occur and failures occur, does that, I know that gets reported to the county, does the county then notify us with that as to being a potential hazard? Or does it go to Eagle? Who does that go to when there's a failure?
Amorino.
That goes to us.
Yeah, they get a copy of it as well, so they're aware of it.
They want where sanitary sewer is an area that's close enough to the waterway.
Yeah, and, and there is some requirement that if you're within a certain footage to an existing sewer, that septic field doesn't get rebuilt.
And then same thing goes for close any ditch, or lake, or whatever, right?
Yeah, I mean, that's where, that's where this really ties in, is like I said, if you had a septic field that's failing, and the side of a slope is, is blown out because of that field, and it happens to be adjacent to a drain, yeah, you can have a, a significant pollution that, that's gonna occur by that, and you may not know it, or, you know, the powers that be may not know it. So the last bullet here is, you know, Rich's field staff, his office, everyone, they're trained as a part of this permit to recognize those kinds of things when they're just out there doing their business and, and driving the township, stopping in at residences for drainage issues, looking at subdivision ponds that are maybe not operating correctly. They're looking for all those kinds of things. It's something, yeah, you know, you're aware of this. But, you know, if something going on that, that, that doesn't look right, they're gonna raise that big flag. That's, that's, that's the education of not just the public, but of the staff as well. Construction site erosion control is... Construction site erosion control is very simply, you have a farm field, it's being developed, it used to be covered with vegetation, whether it be crops or just grass, and as a part of the construction activity, you're stripping all of that vegetation off, all that topsoil off, and now, when it rains, the water just streams away, you know, wherever way the grade is going. So, there's various measures, permits that you have to get to protect and make sure that that site is during that whole construction process, and particularly after rain events, that it's being monitored properly, inspected. In your case, that is done by getting a permit from the McComb County Public Works Office. You don't administer soil erosion here in Washington Township, the county handles that. But it's one of our major checklist items before a site, both before a house can be built, they have to have their permit, and then, obviously, before a private site can be developed, as one of our engineering approval checklist items, we have to have that permit in hand as well. Same thing, inspectors, if it's a Washington Township inspector, one of our inspectors, they see something that's not right, they're notifying the county as well so that their inspectors can come out and remedy that situation. Post-construction is to just make sure that after things are built, they're operating correctly, right? So, again, ponds are doing what they're supposed to be doing, pretreatment structures, whether it be a filtering swirl structure that takes in stormwater before putting it into a pond, or a physical forbay, which is a smaller division within a larger detention pond that also physically separates out water, it lets it settle a little bit before it goes into the larger pond, making sure those are clean, making sure those are operating correctly, that's all part of that post-construction, good housekeeping. And we have detailed standards in our engineering standards that are all enforceable to ensure that these things happen, and the MS4 permit requires that certain languages be there to make sure those are happening. This does fall, again, to Rich and his team to make sure that these are being enforced. They're observing this constantly while they're out in the field and making sure that these sites look like they're supposed to. And then, finally, this is more on your facilities, so you're, again, kind of two major components. The township's responsible for maintaining your own physical facilities, so fire stations, wastewater treatment plant, township hall, where you have stormwater facilities, and then, as we just said, also administering and ensuring that development occurs correctly and construction occurs correctly that are kind of on private sites. So, this would be, again, maintenance of all of those systems. There's a map that's in the permit that identifies all of your various facilities throughout the township, those get, that gets updated regularly as you build a new fire station, say, that'll be added to that as well, and all the facilities there will be identified so that there's a checklist in place of what those inspections look like and when they have to occur. And that, this is just a sample to kind of show you what that, you know, the table looks like of some of the things that township staff is responsible for. You know, Rich's team, Bonnie is intimately familiar with this, she hasn't yelled out to correct me on anything I've said yet, so I hope I'm about 80, 89% correct, but it's a big task. I mean, there's a lot of items here, there's a lot of work that they have to do, but again, it's all to make sure that things are done correctly. So, the goal of the program is to reduce discharge of pollutants into surface waters. It's a system of drainage, including, I'm just going to read this directly because it's easier for everybody, roads, stormwater, pipes and ditches, that's not a combined sewer or a part of sewage treatment plant, and then during wet weather, pollutants are transported through these MS4s to the local water bodies. So, you've been a permitee for about 15 years, like I said, that the permit has gone through some evolution as communities kind of pushed back on some of the initial requirements that were there to get where we are today, but it has evolved, and it's very detailed, and, again, a really big task by the DPW team. I just thought this was a cool map that kind of shows, like we talked about development versus not. Anything that's, you know, blue or green is a land area that falls under an MS4 permit, and it's only, you know, 4% of the land area, but that's where 80% of the people live, right? So, it's always neat to kind of see, you know, what development, where it occurs, and how much of an impact that truly has where everybody's actually located.
I'm seeing two different colors, what's the difference between...
The different versions of the permit as it evolved over time. Any questions?
I have one. So, for the public participation part of it, are we currently doing any PSAs on WBRW? Is anyone aware?
No. I think we, yeah, and I feel like we had some presentations that were up on the website before, I mean, we can make this presentation, we'll probably put it on the website as a clickable link as well, so that it's there if anybody wants to click through. Do you want to film one?
For me?
Do you want to film one?
You want to film one?
Take it out to the basins?
Thank you. Maybe one of these gentlemen would like...
Rich and Bonnie show.
We got the, yeah, there you go, Rich and Bonnie.
There's no action for the board tonight. Again, like I said, this is just part of the public notice period. I just thought it was important that you guys kind of understood what this permit covered and to really, to give recognition to Rich and Bonnie and their whole team on all the work that they do for this.
But what is the next step?
It'll be posted, the link will be posted as of, what's our date?
The notice period starts August.
Yep.
And it's up to 30 days, and they'll take public comments, and then the permit will be effective in, I think, September, October.
Does it come back to the board, then, for action, further action? So, there's no further action needed by this board?
Nothing you need to do, just information.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys, appreciate it. I'm going to stay up here because I think the next item too.
Any questions from the, any comments or questions from the audience on this? Okay. Well, then, I'll mark this one done. Next item is 9.3, the 28-mile water main design. Again, I'll ask Mike Kozak to explain this, we've already went through our water and sewer committee with this, and I'd like to present it to the board.
Sure, thanks, Sam. So, you are aware, as of right now, we're just about complete with the design for the 31-mile road water main extension, and if you could see the graphic that's still on the screen, I apologize, it's a little small, let's see what happens if I do this. So, that's everything in blue that we're designing right now, which is a water main going from mound to just about Van Dyke along 31-mile road, north along campground, east and west along 32-mile road, north up Sisson until we connect into an existing main there at Canterbury Village, I think that's what it's called, and then, east along Barberand and a small piece that you guys approved, that extension over in Frontier Town. So, we're, that's in design now, we're just about done and ready to go out for permits on that. There are over 60 easements, 60? Six zero, right? Over 60 easements in that stretch that we need to get from individual property owners. DPW and their consultant have been working very hard to make that happen, but it is a long process, a lot of discussions, a lot of people want to understand how the project's affecting them directly, we have, there's a lot of meetings, a lot of talk. There are stretches of this project that we can still build this year, and we will build this year, but most likely, we will not build all of this year, all of it this year, it'll get extended into next year a little bit.
When you say year, are you talking about our physical year or the actual year?
Probably both.
Okay.
You know, you can build water main over the winter, and it's actually not a terrible project because we're digging fairly shallow, and there's not a huge amount of disturbance, so, you know, most likely, even if, we'll probably end up maybe bidding it all out together, awarding the contract, and maybe phasing the construction based on when the easements come in. We've got to kind of be careful on that because we don't want to start where we can't go, right? But it'll most likely extend for sure into the next calendar year, into the following fiscal year. Guarantee we won't have everything closed out on a five-mile project by March 31. So, in anticipation of that, the next phase that was approved as a part of the fiscal year end 2023 was the 28-mile road water main, we're calling it 28-mile road, it's still, it's everything west of mound, so it's in what you see there in orange on the map. So, we're going down 28-mile road all the way to the township border, we're going north up Mount Vernon, and then back east along Inwood into mound where we previously extended a main a couple of years ago. That'll complete a nice loop there, and that'll really kind of be the bulk of the mainline water main that needs to be installed now for both fire protection, water quality issues for kind of the stretches of the township. The rest of it will be a lot of fill-in that can occur by developers. Long and short of it is, we are anticipating that we're going to have the same issue with the 28-mile road piece, there's a few less easements that we have to get, but still a chunk, let's say 45. We want to get a jump on that. In order to do that, we have to get all the survey done, we have to get all the design done, we have to get the easements drawn, hand them off to either Rich and his staff or their consultant to go and negotiate those easements and try to get them all signed. So, to do that, if we want to build this project next year, which is the planned next construction season, so next summer into fall into winter of next year, we want to be a little ahead of the game and start earlier than we did on this last one for that very reason. So, that's why it's before you tonight, a little bit in advance of when we normally would, but it'll allow us to immediately immobilize our survey crew. It's five miles of survey that takes a couple of months worth of work. While we wrap up the design on the other one, we'll have that survey in and just keep rolling into the next one, keep those easements moving, that just process will just be continuous now. So, the, it's really just a continuation, it's a separate project, but it's the exact same idea, and it's just giving us a little bit of a time advantage because of the long lag time on all these projects. So, you have our proposal, it's our standard work authorization, it describes the project, uses a general cost estimate related to, based off of bid numbers that we've received on previous projects of the exact same kind, and anticipates, again, a certain number of easements that we need to do, but none of that will be exactly known on the number of easements until that alignment is actually finalized, that's kind of that first step. So, we pick a side of the street that we're going on, figure out how far we need to be offset, and, you know, our goal is to try to minimize those easements as much as possible, but we're hamstrung by the county telling us kind of where that main can and can't go in relationship to the center of the road, and often, that pushes us into private property. So, if there's any questions, I can take them.
Will the, paying for this project, it's coming from the water fund, right?
Water and sewer funds pay for this project, correct. Cash out of the savings that are there, that is correct, this is not part of the bond.
And in the future, will the tappens go back to the water and sewer?
Yep, exactly.
So, that should be a large amount going in if there's larger projects going in.
Right, so, individual connections are obviously based on the frontage of those properties, but larger sites with more frontage are going to have, you know, significantly higher frontage fee that they have to pay, and then, there's also a capacity benefit fee that pays for some of the downstream improvements that are there, pump stations, PRVs, the water tower, all that stuff, I called it a tower, the tank, all that other bigger downstream stuff is paid for with those capacity fees. But, yeah, this is a situation where users pay for this, it's not taxpayer-funded, if you don't connect to the water, you have nothing to do with this effectively.
Thank you.
Yep.
Just a comment. I've already been approached by some folks that live over there on Mount Vernon about how they are not interested in having the water, so I'm going to go on record and say I accept that, but I was also informed, and I hadn't thought about this, but the fire protection that this is going to afford those folks over there is going to be incredible in terms of lowering their insurance rates and things like that because we now have city water and fire hydrants located in the area. So, for those of you who don't want to have water, you might want to think about your insurance bills and fire protection also, so I would support this.
Yeah, and I'll just add, I won't name specific people or sites, but there's been other times where we've run water main, and we've heard those same things that no one would want to connect, and then, as soon as it's there, story changes and people start connecting, so just, we'll believe it when we see it, but if nothing else, you're right, the fire protection alone is a huge savings to...
Yeah, especially that part of the town, the homeowner insurance will drop dramatically.
Once that water main goes in, aren't they required to tap in?
They're not.
They're not?
No.
And I'm glad you brought that up because I don't want that rumor.
The...
Saving you a safe.
Yeah, you did save.
Not again.
This map kind of shows it. Sirens are going. But kind of these yellow shapes, and it's not all of them, but are some of the larger existing subdivisions that are there, you know, the theory is that there'll obviously be hydrants right out in front of those sites. If and when those sites ever do a large paving project, they may be so inclined to extend that water main into the site and get it in front of those existing houses that are there. In the case of Seven Lakes, which we recently extended the water main up to as a part of that consent judgment, previously, they had already put in that water main, it was already there, so that was an easy hookup, and instantly, there was fire protection literally in front of houses, and there was a main there available for people to connect into. This would still require people to make that connection, but again, you're going to have hydrants three, two, three miles closer than you do today, so significant change in fire protection.
I don't know if, I don't, not to put the chief on the spot, but he was telling me that this drops us dramatically, and I'm sorry, chief, if you could say the exact number.
I'm just beaming with like joy listening to this progress. Like, I don't really have the words to tell you what an impact this is on, like, what you're alluding to, Mr. Supervisor, is the ISO fire protection rating schedule, that's the stuff that is a pretty big chunk of what we pay in our homeowner's insurance, along with our age and our history and our credit rating, but, you know, on the real world side, you know, I don't even have the words to tell you what an impact that is, just to have a certified, high-flow, Class 1 municipal water supply system, certainly within 1,000 or 2,000 feet from these structures, but like Mr. Kozak had said, even when we can get into one or two miles, when you talk about a fire department supply in a rural area, that gives us a lot more gallons per minute on shuttling water from a hydrant. So, I'm getting a little techie on you. To answer your question, you know, when we talked about the placement of Fire Station 3, we knew at that time that we had a nice development, the Hidden Hills development, more than five road miles from a fire station, that immediately in ISO's eyes classifies them as a 10. 10 is no fire protection at all, and that is not a fair assessment of this community and my fire department, so immediately, we're working on that today, but as soon as we get Station 3 recognized by ISO, today, Hidden Hills or anything more than five road miles is going to go to a 4. Now, when we bring in water, and a 10 to a 4, I think it was seven years ago, I did a study, and we have some insurance folks here today that have some expertise, and on a median home value of $300,000, going from a 10 to a 4 was like really, if I remember right, it was like $500 or $600 a year per house for that value. So, it's impactful, and they're going to feel it in their wallets, going from a 10 to a 4, a 4 to a 3 in some areas, not so much. But just remember, on the real world side of things, that's where you're going to see a huge benefit in property preservation and life safety. Did that help?
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Nicey, if I could ask you, if you wouldn't mind, talking in the insurance business, how does that get translated to the insurance company? Is that something the fire puts out there for records, or is it the individual homeowner has to reach out to their individual insurance company to let them know that there's this water source now available?
The individual homeowner will have to do that.
Okay. Yes. Thank you.
Any comments from the audience or online?
Just a question.
Sorry, if you could come to the microphone, sorry.
Just a quick question. Jim Richard, 65397 Camp Brown Road. You mentioned Camp Brown? Water main? Yes. Where's that?
Can you speak into the mic, please?
31 to 32. Okay. Yes. Thank you.
Any other questions from the...
What's the exact dollar amount that you're asking us to approve tonight?
So, it's the sum of all those various tasks. The easement number is an unknown number because we're not sure on the number, so we just bill those on an each basis, so it's the 404-275 plus whatever the easements end up being on the total number. Yeah. There's some money in there on some updates to the water model related to a potential, still a potential booster station in this area, we've been working really close with Rich and Kirk on potential locations for that and timing of that when that's needed. You guys are a hilly community, as you know, there's a lot of elevation difference, so we're trying to optimize the systems that you have in place right now and minimize the spend on any kind of booster from both the initial capital investment, and then, obviously, there's pumps that you run almost all year round on that. So, a little bit additional modeling, we need to do some additional testing to verify if and when that needs to and where that would be located. So, that's why, that's just an extra that's in there, that, there was a version of that in our last proposal as well, and again, same thing, we're doing that same effort. When we put five miles in, it's a lot of, a lot of main to make sure we know where it's going.
Does that 404,00275, does it include the easements, or are we going to approve that afterwards?
Yeah, so that's an each, so we bill you guys on the total number that we actually create, that we draw up, because there's an easement created for each individual property. And as I stand here today, I can't tell you what that exact number is because the routing's going to determine that, not even the routing per se, but the offset, the front and center line may or may not require us to get it from certain properties, there may be existing roadway easements in place that prevent, not prevent, but allow us to not get an easement from an individual property owner, so we simply bill those on an each basis, and copies are provided to the DPW when they're actually created.
So, the answer is 404-275 plus any additional?
Some number, yeah, and I don't, again, I don't know that number, reconcile that at the end, essentially.
If you were to throw a dart at a dartboard for this five-mile...
If you were to throw a dart at a dartboard for this five-mile stretch, what would you expect the easement addition to be?
I think...
200,000, 100,000?
No, I think we said, expected easement required will be between 43 and 59 total easements. So, they're using that value. It's an additional between 47, 47,364, 900 for those documents. That's the range. We actually put it in there. That was, yeah. I just, you know, I don't want to lock into a number and then have to come back to you guys and go, hey, there was one more we had to get, or there was one less. So, that's why we do it that way.
No questions?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion that we accept the Gifford Webster water main design at the cost of 404,275 plus any additional easements.
I'll support that.
Okay. So, that's a motion by Babinski, seconded by Polad. If no questions, roll call.
Babinski's a yes. Polad?
Yes.
Dattowski?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Ravidy?
Yes.
And Nicely?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you guys so much. I'm going to go not talk for a little bit.
Don't go far. I might need you to. Okay, next item is 9.4, the sidewalk variance request on 65355 Campground. And we have new resident, Michael Cox, so I'll call him up, explain the variance.
Hello?
Hello?
Hi there.
Hi, Michael Cox, 65355 Campground. Moved in there May 7th this year. Campground Road is a natural beauty road. We purchased the property because it was not in a subdivision and for the street's natural beauty. The nearest sidewalk is almost one mile, actually a mile and a half away, north and south. Northbound being Woodside Bible Church on 32 Mile, and to the south, Ashbury Subdivision on 29 Mile. Each total about 1,000 feet of paved sidewalk right now on Campground. On 20, between, on Campground, between 29 and 32, there's about 80 occupied homes and about a handful of empty lots. I think there's three or four homes going up right now. That's less than one dwelling per acre for the township's website. I've already talked to multiple residents on Campground whose homes front Campground. Not one of them plans on putting a sidewalk in or allowing the township or the county to put one in. It's not that I don't want to put a sidewalk in, just right now. I don't see the value to the community for a sidewalk to nowhere. You know, I got the rebuttal from the township engineer and all that stuff, so it's very textbook. I don't think it applies to my situation to have a 165-yard, or 165-foot-long sidewalk, eight foot wide, that is only accessible from my driveway. My proposal was that if the neighboring property to north or the south was ever rebuilt on, and they had to put a sidewalk in, I would gladly do so at that time. That's pretty much it. The master plan, I guess there's a master plan for the sidewalk in the township. I requested that, and I guess there is no document for a master plan, like map. It basically just talks about a master sidewalk plan, so I don't know if anybody has that on hand to provide more information on that.
The way the ordinance currently reads, it describes where pathways have to go, and essentially describes every major mile road and half-mile roads, that that's where, it's only a couple paragraph sentences. It's not an actual physical plan. We do have a quote-unquote "master plan" that indicates where you have existing facilities and what condition they're in and what material they are, but I guess that's more of an inventory than a master plan. But the way the ordinance reads, it basically specifies that you need them along all your major mile roads and north-south roads. Everything Mr. Cox said is true. I'm not going to argue those points, but this is the, I don't know, 20th request that I've written letters on. I always tell you the same thing. I understand that there's nothing that this is connecting to immediately. It's far away from the nearest path. I get all of that. If we continue to not require these pathways to go in, these will be the gaps that you will be filling in 10 years from now, 20 years from now, at taxpayer costs. You won't have easements. You'll have to pay homeowners for easements. I'm going to give you guys the same answer always, that I think you always should require these to go in. In this instance, where it's individual homeowners, I know there's existing houses that have been built in the past 10 years that it wasn't enforced. It's enforced. It's part of the ordinance. It's required. So, the only other item, material, concrete or asphalt is acceptable for the pathway. Concrete wears a lot better, so that's obviously an acceptable item that can be used. Just has to be eight feet wide, but it'll last, you know, a lot longer and have a more attractive finish.
I was just curious, like, what's a rough estimate it would cost to put aside that?
I'm still waiting on quotes. I've been waiting for two guys to show up, and this year's been kind of hectic, even just wrapping the house up. Everybody's telling me they're booked up until spring of next year for concrete work, so I'm still waiting on quotes right now. I'm guessing around $5,000.
Mike, could you give us a ballpark?
Yeah, that's, I mean, like, what's like a rough estimate?
Hang on. It's 165 feet is your front?
Yeah, 165.
6,500 bucks?
Depending on material rates, as you know.
Is that asphalt or cement?
That, I'm assuming that's cement.
How much was it again?
He's guessing 6,500.
And then in asphalt, too?
It's about the same. They go back and forth. It would be within 10% of that one way or the other.
Gotcha.
And then with the easement right now, that's Macomb County Road. It's 33 feet right away. Five years down the road, 10 years down the road, if it changes to 66 feet, you know, how was the neighbor, how are we going to connect the sidewalk, you know? And if the vacant property next to me is built, the grade will change. Campground has marshlands just north of me, so the township's going to have to pay for a boardwalk to go over the wetlands, designated wetlands. So, I just don't see the next five, 10, 15 years. The county definitely won't put a sidewalk in. They've already told me that. It'd basically be the township. So, the county won't clean the ditches out. They just maintain the road. They can't go past the edge of the road. You know, if they said, hey, in three years, the sidewalk's coming down the road, I'd put a sidewalk in three years. If they say 20 years down the road, I'll put one in 20 years down the road.
Any questions from the board?
I know from a ZDA perspective that we like to see the sidewalks in. We have to start connectivity throughout the town. We have a lot of areas that you just have no way to get from point A to point B to point C. So, we have to start somewhere, and if we continue to put things off, like Mr. Kozak said, when other developments happen and they put them in, now it's the spots where they were not put in that could potentially fall upon the township and the township residents to foot that bill.
If it's deferred, why would it be on the township then? Because it would be on me.
I don't know where you're going to be in five years if you're even going to own that property.
We could defer it to the new homeowner.
It would go with the land, correct?
Mr. Seaver?
We've done, as you recall, we've done that in the past.
Yeah, we just did that.
Where we've had, where we've had a sidewalk deferral agreement with the landowner indicating that under certain conditions, landowner would install the sidewalk. We did it. I can't think of the gentleman's name. Phil Rosieri's client.
Oh, yeah.
When he came in, we did exactly the same thing. We said, look, if and when a sidewalk comes up either side, then you'll be obligated to do it, and we recorded it on the property so that if this gentleman sells the property, then the next owner would take it with a lien on the land. So, you're guaranteed it's going to get done. And the provision that we had put in the last agreement was that if they didn't do it, the township could go in, install it, and lien the property and collect it as a tax. So, we were totally protected if that was a route that the board wanted to go. You can protect yourself if that's, if you want to get there.
If that's the direction you want to go to.
If that's the direction you want to go.
Correct.
The agreement that we did on Mr. Rosieri's client's piece, whose name now escapes me, totally protects the township if that's the route you want to go.
I would be in favor of that, too. I mean, I don't see any sense of having a sidewalk there because there's only two corners at 28 and 29 where there are sidewalks on a campground, and they're there because there are some condos that are there, or else homes. So, I would be in favor of the agreement, just like Dan had mentioned to you.
I have a question for trustee Olson. You're on the sidewalk committee, I think?
Yes.
The, we have a budget for sidewalks, I think, for the township, which is what, about a million dollars?
A million a year.
A million. So, that money is being allocated out of township funds that the residents have paid, and basically we're using that money to put in sidewalks that probably were deferred someplace along the line.
As far as I'm aware, yes.
But, yeah, we also have funds from some of the other people that they would pay the money to use another location.
Okay.
I mean, we can get the breakdown by that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But my point is...
Not a big chunk.
Yeah. My point is, is that the deferring this and not putting it in, ultimately somewhere down the road, and again, my comments on sidewalks are well-known. The patchwork that we have in Washington Township is just because we give deferrals, and then somewhere along the line, 20 years from now, somebody has to come in and pay to put a sidewalk in, and it's usually the residents because we deferred it and we didn't ask the developer or the builder to put the sidewalk in. So...
That's true. And also, I believe there's nothing in the zoning law that we have that precludes someone on a natural beauty road from putting in a sidewalk, correct?
Mike?
Mike?
I'll say it this way. There's nothing in the natural beauty road requirements that precludes someone for placing a sidewalk outside of the public right of way, which is what we're asking for in this case, in an easement adjacent to the right of way. There's no requirement that prevents that.
Mr. Cox, was this sidewalk in your site plan when you submitted for the township?
Yeah, the first time we submitted, didn't have one in. They rejected because it had to have a proposed sidewalk for the building inspection or permit. So, the builder told me, well, it's just a proposed sidewalk. It's outside of the right of way. You know, it's for the future, you know, reference. So, that's what I assumed. So, and then a couple days before the final permit, they said, well, you're missing your sidewalk. And I'm like, well, why would I put one in? You know, it's proposed, you know? So, supposedly, when you pull a home permit, you pull a sidewalk permit. I don't know how that works. You know, it's a bunch of papers you sign, and it's in there. So, I don't know if I actually signed a sidewalk permit. Per the township's requirement, they don't list Campground Road as a through fair or secondary road. On the map, it is a natural beauty road, and sidewalks are only required on a through fair or primary road. So, legally, are they calling it a natural beauty road, primary, secondary? You know, I'm not a lawyer, you know, so somebody has to answer that. Is it named wrong?
I had an idea that we've done in the past, and I don't know if you're open or to the board, of course, but I'd be okay with it if you would sign an easement for future use if we decide in 20 years from now to put a sidewalk, so we already have the easement locked in. But at 6,500, if you would give it to us, then we could use it in the current gap program that we have now. So, this way, you still put up the money. We use it in a different part of town, and we have the easement, at least in the future if we decide we can. I know we install it later. We have to pay later, but...
We don't know what the cost is going to be in 20 years.
No, I know, but I'm saying if he puts it in, he's going to dish out 6,500 either way.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it's another option.
But it's what the township would put out in 20 years. The delta there, we don't know what that is.
No, but I'm saying like, we have gaps on 28, 29 Mile. We could, 6,500, we could fill a gap, and we'd have the easements. So, 20 years from now, we don't have to go to the new person and get the easement either.
I'm just trying to think ahead.
No, 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 no. Me, too. That's why I'm offering as a different option.
I know Trailside Dairy got a deference at Campground and Van Dyke not to put a sidewalk in the front for three years until adjoining properties north or south had to put one in. So, you know, I'd rather get competitive bids, see what the price was, instead of give somebody else that, and then overpay for a sidewalk, too. So...
Are you asking then to defer this since you get the prices in? So, we have a better idea at that point?
Deferred, I get the prices or ask for a three-to-five-year extension until maybe the northbound lot is, you know, constructed on.
No, I guess you're asking the board to defer until you get the prices and then come back to the board again, since you said you were waiting on that until the springtime?
Yeah, for another option. I mean, I would like to wait until the north or southbound property has a sidewalk or comes through because, yes, cement will last 25 years. You know, Mike says engineer, but we see our roads. I mean, granted, they're not taking heavy axles down the road, but I know how concrete lasts in Michigan. It's 15 years if you're lucky. So, I just don't see you have a segment, a sidewalk to nowhere. So...
Your homes are already built, correct?
Yeah, the home's built.
So, other than it not connecting to the north or south, any other reason why you wouldn't want a sidewalk in front of there? I don't know if you have kids, if you're married or anything, and it's none of my business.
I have kids. My house is 300 feet off the road. I don't want the kids 30 feet off. You know, they're young ones.
No, because kids ride up and down the sidewalks, right? Driveways, stuff like that.
Yeah, they ride up and down the driveway, yeah.
And as they get older, they go a little further.
Yeah.
And they will.
Yeah.
Any comments from the audience?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Well, I'll come up one at a time.
Again, Jim Richards, 65397 Campground Road. I moved here 12 years ago from a subdivision. What attracted us was, we wanted acreage. We wanted privacy. The beautification road, we found out you can't widen it. You can't cut the trees down on the sides. It was a setting. So, it sounds like you have a broad-based policy here on the sidewalks. Sidewalks, you're not going to have a sidewalk connected from 30 Mile to 31 in 50 years. This is absurd. It's ridiculous. It's a dirt road, and eight feet wide on top of that? It's crazy. I think you should amend that. You should look at different areas. It's not a subdivision. This is a rural area. We don't want sidewalks. That's why we moved there. So, and depending on the acreage, what a sidewalk can cost, you know, that's, and then I got to pay taxes on top of it if I got to put it in. For what?
Who's going to use it?
Who's going to use it? We, like Mike said, we got wetlands down the road a little ways. We've got heavily wooded areas. We've got McComb Nature Trail. That's why, that's why we moved there, too. We use a trail. It makes no sense at all. I don't mean to be rude, but I'm pretty upset about it when I heard this. I thought Mike was wrong. I said, you can't do that on a beautification road. I mean, if you can't cut down trees alongside of the road, how are you going to cut down trees to put a sidewalk in? So, I'm just asking that, look at the zoning. Look at the area. It's not a subdivision. I think you need to amend this a little bit to, you know, direct it to the areas. It's, there's just no way in heck that people are going to be putting sidewalks in up and down there. That's why we moved there. So, the dirt road, it cuts the traffic down, less people are going to go on dirt roads, so it's more private. That's, I mean, that's what we wanted. So...
It is a beautiful road.
We want to keep it.
Yeah, come on up. I'm sorry.
Hello, my name is Chuck Frog. I live 65750 Campground. I'm in the middle of building a house. It'll be completed probably within two months. I live down the street from Mike, and I just want to know what the purpose of the sidewalk is. Why is it, why? What's the purpose of a sidewalk on a dirt road? On both sides, eight feet wide. Just the other day, I seen somebody on the trail on a golf cart going to the ice cream shop on Campground. Are people allowed, you know, are we going to have side-by-sides running down the sidewalk when it eventually goes through? Are we going to have golf carts going down the sidewalk? going down the sidewalk? My sidewalk is proposed. I didn't know it at the time. But I only have 130 feet of frontage. Next to me is a neighbor that's been there for quite a while. South of me, the other neighbor's been there. Next to that is the power lines. And across the street is the little swamp. Well, I just don't visualize why a sidewalk would be there. Who's going to use it? I'm not going to use it. It's just going to be a waste of money for me, waste of money for Mike. And yes, an eyesore. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Chuck, can you spell your last name before I go in here?
Froge, F-R-O-G-G-E.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the audience?
Go ahead.
You know, one of the major advantages of having a sidewalk is a safe place for a resident to walk, ride a bike, whatever, because the McComb Nature Trail doesn't hit some spots. And the McComb Nature Trail is a great asset that we have throughout the communities, you know, not just Washington, but through Bruce, through Ray, et cetera. Okay, so it extends like 25 miles. So it's a great asset to have. But sidewalks are definitely something that can keep residents safe. And if you've ever known anybody who got hit by a car because there were no sidewalks and they were riding on the side of the road, you may have a little different perspective on that. Okay? So that's the perspective I'm coming from. But I'm also going to go to the other side when my brother lived in New England. And he said, Dan, it was so nice not having sidewalks here and having, having no fences and just being able to have that country-like feel, you know, that open area feel. So I can see both sides of it.
And I just want to comment. So again, we're trying to vision the future, right? So not just what's today. You moved here, how many years ago? It was this. Our town is evolving. We're trying to evolve with the town. We didn't have the McComb Nature Trail when I first moved here. That came. I live in an area that I have to go down 29 mile road, which isn't, currently doesn't have any sidewalks. Would have been nice to do that. Otherwise, I'm walking my family or riding my bike down 29 mile road to get there or taking my car and then driving into the bike, which is down the path, path to be able to use it. So it's not that we're trying to force things on her, but we have to vision what this town is for the future, not just for what it is right now or what it was. We're looking for the future is what's going to be happening. So again, it's like, Dan, I understand both sides of what's being said. You moved to a certain area. You wanted it a certain way. Towns change. It's not just this board. It's previous boards that started implementing the sidewalk concept of making it a more walkable, drivable, walk or whatever.
Connected community.
Connected community. So I understand that whole, yeah, it doesn't make sense right now. It goes nowhere. But someday it will. Again, I can't predict how long it's going to take to get to your area. So...
People don't want it. Are you familiar with Campground?
If you want to come up and make a comment, sir?
Are you familiar with Campground between 30 and 31?
I lived here for 26 years. Yep.
All the lots, all the acreage there. Can you imagine putting a sidewalk in? Do some of the wooded areas, can you imagine the cost of taking 200-year-old trees down and putting a sidewalk in? If, if I wanted a sidewalk and if I had young kids, just like you, you move somewhere, you look at the schools, you look at the community, what you want for your family, that's where you move. If, if I want a sidewalk, I move to a subdivision. I moved out of a subdivision. I don't want that anymore. So it's, I mean, just to say, hey, we're going to change. Well, everybody moved here for a reason. You know, you, you got a lot of nice subdivisions going up. People want to be in a subdivision. That, that's great. But this has been developed for years and, and you're going to come in and change it. It's just... I'm sorry. It's just ridiculous. It's, it's, I mean, it's, I would move out before I put a sidewalk in. I don't, I don't want a sidewalk. I don't want to pay taxes on a sidewalk. Nobody can use. It's... It's crazy. And especially Campground. And I'll, I'll say something else about Campground because it's a dirt road. Some people are going 50 miles an hour down that road as well. And if I had kids, I sure wouldn't have a kid out by the road on a sidewalk, Campground. I, my next-door neighbors won't allow their kids in the front yard. You know, it's, it's dangerous. So there's no value to a sidewalk on Campground, trust me, even if you, you connected it all the way down. So...
You know, you mentioned about it being a dirt road. And the one thing we, is the unknown. We have no idea when a road's going to be paved.
My understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, that it can't be paved because it's a beautification road. That's partially why I moved there.
Is that impertinence?
McComb County Road Commission said they just wouldn't touch it to deal with the red tape because they can't touch past the actually road itself. They're not allowed to clean out the ditches. It's on the homeowner to weed up the ditches and do all that stuff for the drainage. So...
Yeah, this passed in the early 2000s. We looked it up the other day. And in order to declassify it, we'd have to do a, invite the public in. It's a whole process to unclassify it as a natural road.
So therefore, would always stay a dirt road until, until the classification were to change?
But you would need the, I mean, maybe Bob can explain it better than I can.
I cannot.
The McComb County Road Commission says they don't want to deal with it when I went down.
These beautification roads, the county told me they were intended for like Upper Peninsula. Like people go there to look at the beautiful of the road. They weren't really intended in the center of like our town, Washington. But it did get passed years ago, way before all of us. So, I mean, I'll let...
No, Sam's correct. It, it passed simply in the past as a request by the township leadership. And that was passed by a board at the time. And then it went to, at the time, county road commissioners and they passed it. The answer from the county was very simply, if you want to undo that, then the board has to pass a different resolution that says we no longer want it to be a natural beauty road. And that would have to get approved by the Department of Roads in this case to undo that. So it is not impossible to fix. But as it currently stands, no, you can't pave the road today with that designation on the road. And just to reiterate what Sam just said, I would say the Department of Roads was very clear that that designation, in their opinion, as road engineers, does not belong on that road due to the densities that are there. While there may be only single-family parcels primarily on Campground, there's also multiple subdivisions with hundreds of homes that tee right off of Campground. So a lot of cars use that road. I, I understand that a lot of people are attracted to that. And that's everyone's own personal opinion. But as Sam said, this is a designation for tourist attractions up north, not a road south of I-69. I mean, it just doesn't make...
And there's no guarantees when you move into any area. If you move into an area and it's like you, you got 60 acres behind you that aren't developed, there's no guarantee that your whole life there, it's not going to be developed because that's not a reasonable assumption to make. That's not your property, is what it comes down to.
You can always buy it and keep it, farmland yourself. I think that's the only option.
That's the only option, yes, sir.
I wonder if Pat Maher would like to weigh in on the ordinance itself. I'm sorry. Put you on the spot. I just, I wondered to know if was there discussion when the ordinance is being written about natural beauty roads and not having sidewalks there?
You know, I, I don't recollect whether or not the sidewalk issue came up with regard to the beauty scenic roads. The, you know, our attitude has always been the same. We can set these things aside. We can defer them. We cannot have people put them in. We're going to have the same continual argument as time progresses that there's not one here. Why do I need to have one? And I know that's become a cliche, but it's a fact. And we've seen that for the last 30 years.
Pat, correct me if I'm wrong, but it is my understanding that that lot was pretty much cleared of all the trees and trebery to the road before built.
It appears as though a great deal of the tree frontage has been removed during construction.
So there's not a whole lot of tree frontage left if a sidewalk were to go in?
I think you can maneuver around most of the trees right now, yes.
Okay.
I see no reason why the, the trees have to come down. We're all talking about green spaces. When you put a cement in there, you're taking away part of the green spaces that we're all trying to get action. Now, it's a little bit different than a park, but you're putting a piece of cement or asphalt in an open area is now taking away from the green space that we're trying to achieve. And it takes away from the attraction of that specific road as the natural beauty of that road. And to destroy that in those trees, I think, is just not right to do.
He said he could go around them.
My property would be easy to go around because when I bought the property, it was vacant for I don't know how many years. When DTE came in, they, they chopped the top of the trees off and basically killed off all the trees.
Yeah, they do that.
So it wasn't maintained. Now, if you go one lot north, you're getting trees that are eight-foot, 10-foot diameter. And then the density goes higher and higher the more north you go. And the south you go. Between 30 mile and 29, there's MJC White Oaks subdivision. That's a condominium sub, I think. They have a high-density tree lot. I mean, there's not even drainage on Campground Road. The trees are growing into the road. So can they be zigzagged around? Maybe. But at what point are you chopping down everything just to get an eight-foot pathway through? So...
I would be in favor of like deferring the sidewalk. I mean, I don't see any reason why to have it. And there's a kind, I have a funny story. Someone had mentioned that you probably wouldn't get hit if a someone like, or was it like have a chance of getting hit if you're walking a sidewalk. In this one community, with this one community, this lady was hit by a dog. The car hit the dog and a dog hit her. So, you know, there's funny things can happen. But I don't, but I feel that we should just defer this. And because I don't see any reason to have that sidewalk there. I mean, it's a, it's a beautiful area. It's wooded. There's, there's swamplands. There's probably wetlands there. No one's going to build it, look at a wetland either.
I'll go one step further and think we should look at the ordinance and make that a no sidewalk zone.
And just like on a ZBA, sometimes we've, we've had some issues. And then the ordinances have been changed. So that's, that's always an alternate way that we could go.
Based on everything I've just heard, I'd favor more in line with what Sam's saying is obtaining the easement and then having the amount of money that you would have spent by having it there put somewhere else in the future. And I understand the whole concept of in the future, you don't know how much going to be. But we can at least fill in a gap somewhere now.
At least we get the benefit now on another spot. If, if he's open to the idea.
I mean, as long as maybe if I was able to get competitive bids and you accepted the offer, you know, for the bid to my concrete. And then there was no lien on the property saying the owner would have to do it. I'd consider that. But if we're going to go through and change Campground Road, you know, I think there's two houses a mile north. I mean, are they going to have to go through the same thing? You know, so I don't know. May, maybe a reclassification of the sidewalks on that road would be the best way to go.
If this sidewalk were to be built, it can't be, it wouldn't be till at least next year, right? Because you just can't get anybody out there to do the work.
Yeah, probably by the time I get bids this year and everybody's booked up, I'm going to, depending on the weather, it'd probably be late this year, early spring and next year.
I'm, I'm tending to agree with Mike about maybe we should relook at the ordinance and, and discuss if a natural beauty road should have sidewalks or they should just be, what's the word I want? Just deferred or?
No sidewalk zone.
Yeah, no sidewalk zone. If it's a natural beauty road.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, come up.
I'm Chuck's wife. He was up speaking earlier. We're building the home on Campground between 30 and 31. We have three huge oak trees that are like this wide on our property that are right where a sidewalk would have to go. And somebody's going to have to take those down. And it would cost us thousands of dollars. Plus, it would ruin the look of the road. They overhang the road. They make the canopy. So it would be, it should be reconsidered. That's all.
Thank you.
Would there ever be a possibility that the county would come by and say, we're going to reclassify the road and pave it?
Designation has to come from the request.
It has to come from, from the board?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, considering, looking at the ordinance and the other options, I think, I mean, I'd like to maybe make the argument, should we just give him a two-year deferral and then he'd come back? And by then, we'd know where we're proceeding.
But in concurrently, have the PC look at the zoning ordinance and as...
Well, we would make a separate motion.
Yeah, I, I know. But at the same time, like Mike said, look at designating that as a no sidewalk zone.
Yeah.
Mr. Supervisor, if I could, since they can't do anything until the springtime, let's review the ordinance first before we decide we're going to do any type of refer, refer, defer, and then revisit it at that point. Because of the, once it gets deferred, then there's, excuse me, then once it gets rezoned as a no sidewalk zone, then there's no sense of doing that type of additional work. So I think we should look at it first at rezoning it in that specific area or other areas that are that beauty of nature, no sidewalk zones, before we say Mr. Cox has to defer it and then come back again and we got to undo everything.
So postpone a decision until next spring, say March, April?
Well, until the PC comes back with...
Patrick? Reasonable? Fair enough?
Yeah, I think if... Well, we can't do anything till the springtime. So I think if we just request...
It would be like a table to the PC.
Planning and zoning.
Well, it's not so much a table as you're going to, you have to give the gentleman some relief. If the ordinance requires that he, that he construct it, you're going to have to defer it.
Defer it first.
The table, it doesn't help him out because the ordinance requires that he do it.
Well, that's what I thought.
But if you're going to give him some affirmative relief, maybe a, a motion to defer the requirement for sidewalk installation until, I'll pick a date, April 1, 2022 period. And then at about that time, the gentleman can come back again. And if your ordinance is revised, the issue may be moot. If the ordinance is not revised, then you're going to have the same discussion.
I'll make that motion.
Yep.
Can you repeat that, Bob?
You're going to re-watch the tape?
No, don't, don't re-watch this. No. It would be a motion, motion to defer the construction of the sidewalk as required by the ordinance until April 1, 2022 period. And then separately, the planning commission can take up the issue of whether or not that the ordinance ought to be revised.
Is that fair enough to you, Mr. Cox?
Sounds fair to me.
Okay. And then, Mr. Chuck, is that...
For me, I just write on the coat...
They'd like your $500.
But that's not what we're... Bob, if you can speak on that. Can he write on his coattails since he's in a two-year project? Or does he have to come before the board at another time?
I'm sorry, what was that?
I was asking the attorney a question.
Well, technically, this, this gentleman that's coming up that's building his house, the ordinance requires that he do it. Common sense, however, would suggest that it's ridiculous for him to, to come before the board and have the same discussion. Why don't we make that, why don't we withdraw that motion and simply indicate that somebody might want to move to defer all requirements for sidewalk construction along Campground Road until April 1, 2022?
Specify the limits of Campground, please.
Yeah, between 29 and 32.
Between 30 and 31.
What is it?
Well, I'm giving you an extra mile.
Give him an extra mile.
What did we say, 29 and 32?
29 and 32.
So that way, it covers everybody along Campground in that geographic area until April of next, April 1 of next year. And if, and if the ZBA or the, the planning commission, you know, doesn't correct it to the board's satisfaction and you still want to stand your ground, then you'll have to deal with these in April. If, if there's a remedy that's afforded by an ordinance amendment, then these will all go away. then you'll have to deal with these in April. If, if there's a remedy that's afforded by an ordinance amendment, then these will all go away.
I withdraw my motion. And I'll, and I'll support that motion.
What he said.
Exactly what I was going to do.
I'll second that motion.
Nope, I think you got it.
Okay, so that's a motion by Polad, seconded by Pravidi, and roll call of.
You guys are good with that?
I'm good with it.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, Polad?
Yes.
Pravidi?
Yes.
Babinski's a yes. Tatowski?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Nicely?
Yes.
And Cap?
Kicking the can down the road to April 1st.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Um, and I'd like to make the motion. Oh, you didn't? I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
No, I haven't voted yet. I'm still pondering my conscience here.
Babinski voted for you.
I'm pondering my conscience. I guess I'm willing to defer this until April 1st, but unfortunately, it's going to wind up in my lap anyway on planning commission. So thanks very much.
Yes, it is. We just rolled the ball your way there, Gary.
Thanks a load.
Then I guess I'd like to make the motion to submit this proposal to the planning commission to resolve this before March 31st of 2022.
Come on.
Gary, you can present it at the next meeting.
Let's, let's look at the calendar first because if it's, if these got till April 1st and then you say March 31st.
Okay, April 1st.
No, his is April 1st. So I think.
We have to have a decision before then.
Uh, February 20, February 28th.
Do we have to have an answer back to here?
The planning commission to report back to the board no later than February 28th. And then we have two, that's, that's a Monday, and then we'll have two meetings in March to go over it before April 1st.
Okay, so I'll reword my motion. I'd like to submit this to be reviewed by the planning commission from Campground Road from 29 to 32 mile on the discussion of sidewalks on a beautiful, a natural beautification road and report back to the Board of Trustees by February 28, 2022.
So that would be on the March 2nd agenda.
March 2nd or the 16th, depending on.
Well, they're going to get it done sooner.
Of course they will.
I'll support that.
So motion by Pravidi, seconded by Polad, no questions, no other comments from audience. Roll call?
Pravidi?
Yes.
Polad?
Yes.
Tatowski?
Yes.
Cap?
Yeah.
Babinski's?
Yes.
Nicely?
Yes.
And Olson?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Thank you. Next item is 9.5 sidewalk variance from DNB Auto. I'd like to call up Brody Burton and all his representatives up here.
Is this Brody?
No, no. I think that's his representative. Hey, Matt?
Sorry.
You know what? While they're setting up, maybe I'm going to recommend, maybe I'd like to make a motion for a five-minute recess so they set up and give us a little body break. Okay, motion by Pravidi, seconded by Tatowski. Roll call?
We do all in favor?
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. We'll report back at 9:20 PM.
Hey, Gary didn't say anything. I don't know.
Yes, same.
We all voted.
Okay. Motion to go back into open session?
So moved.
Or motion by Babinski, seconded by Cap. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passed. All, all against? Okay, motion passed. Yeah, if you could state your name and.
Yes, good, is this on? All right. Good evening. My name's Joel Bodway. I'm with Community Engineering, civil engineering firm representing DNB Auto Sales for the variance request tonight. Like to thank Mr. Supervisor and the Board of Trustees for having us here tonight. I also like to introduce our, our owner, the owner of the property, Brody Burton. So he's here to answer any questions if those do arise. But I'd like to first just give you the purpose of why we're, why we're seeking the variance. Seeking the variance primarily because of existing site condition. You know, in a moment, I'll just go through the, real briefly, the site plan. I don't want to take any, anybody else's, all the extra time, but this will just be a brief presentation for you. The history of the site is in 2009, it received site plan approval. That's when the, the site itself was changed uses and became an auto dealership. At that point, so that was 12 years ago, and the existing pavement that's out there right now, or the existing layout is, was there back in 2009 when everything was approved. At that point, as part of that site plan approval 12 years ago, there was not a pathway part of that, you know, site plan approval. Am I on sharing the screen? Thank you. Great. So here's a, an aerial photo, just to kind of orient yourself. To the left, you see Van Dyke Avenue to the, DNB Auto is right in the middle. You got Samaritan House to the south. This is a photo from the year 2000. So the existing pavement that you see here, you will see in the next slide, is identical. Nothing's changed and that pavement was there even prior to 2000. There was a photo I actually saw from 95 and, you know, it just was too grainy to, to show up here on the presentation. As you can see on this, this drawing, you know, again, there, there is a just existing pavement that's just in the front of the, in front of the site. And to the, to the south, you have Samaritan House. To the east, you have M53. To the north, you have Gerber Collision and Glass. And then to the west, you have McComb Orchard Trail and Van Dyke. As part of our sidewalk variance, the crosshatched area that you see on the plan, I'm sure that was all in your packets as well, is where the sidewalk or eight-foot-wide pathway would typically go. You know, there is a future expansion for Van Dyke. Right now, it's currently a 66-foot wide right-of-way, so 33-foot half right-of-way. And it would eventually go to a 60-foot right-of-way or 120-foot total. As part of that, the ordinance states that the pathway is meant to go one foot inside of the right-of-way. And that's where it's shown right there. As you can see, a significant amount of the existing display area that was approved in 2009 would have to be removed in order for this pathway to go in. This was the, is the approved 2009 site plan when it became Donahue Motors. And that's prior to it becoming DNB Auto. As you can see in the front, there is no sidewalk proposed as part of this site plan approval. And I do recognize that townships do grow and different things have to happen. I mean, the, the right-of-way is going to be expanded eventually to a 60-foot right-of-way. We feel that when it does expand to that future right-of-way and those improvements for Van Dyke happen, that's when it's more appropriate for a sidewalk to be, to be installed. And at that point, most, most likely, this would not be an auto dealership anymore. So again, just the highlighted area that you see, this is what we are requesting as part of our variance. It's weaving the eight-foot-wide pathway along Van Dyke. Currently, there is no pathway, and I do understand and agree completely with Giffords Webster's analysis that even though there is no sidewalk, you know, to the north or to the south, eventually that may happen. What we're here to, what we're about to go into is just a different view of what this stretch of Van Dyke is in the community. It's different than any other mile stretch, except for the campground area. This illustration shows where the 33-foot right-of-way is right now, and it also shows where the future 60-foot right-of-way is. If you look right in the middle of the screen, you can see where DNB Auto Sales is. Having that pathway would be just inside, just to the left of where that dash, red dash line is. You can see that when that goes in, DNB Auto Sales has a potential of losing up to six display car spaces as well as all of the five visitor parking spots that are out there right now as part of that site plan. The other thing I'd like to mention is that we are currently in front of the ZBA as well. We have been to, just a little history there. We have gone to the planning commission. We have gone to the ZBA once each. This site plan was originally submitted to the planning commission back in September. I believe it was September of last year. As far as the ZBA, one of the variances that we would require as part of our site plan approval process is parking lot frontage reduction. You can see the dash line on this one. Because Van Dyke is a, is a major road, we would have to have a 20-foot green belt beyond the 60-foot right-of-way. So by, you know, if we removed all of that existing paving, that leaves very little space for any display cars in the front, which is the livelihood of this business. I know that's not something we're talking about today, but there, what happens today reflects upon, you know, the variances we have in front of the ZBA as well as our site plan approval. So I'm going to go through just a couple of site photos. We're almost done. Appreciate your patience. The, this site photo is taken right in front of DNB Auto. It's a view looking north on Van Dyke. You can see the ITC utility towers and overhead lines. Currently, there is an existing easement for those ITC lines and that would basically fall within that 60-foot right-of-way where this pathway would go. As you can see here, I didn't draw in the 60-foot right-of-way because that's almost off the screen. But this, this photo does bring about one of our other arguments, you know, for this, weaving this variance, is that you can already see the monument sign at Gerber, you know, would be right within that 60-foot right-of-way as well as, you know, trying to maneuver around the existing ITC towers.
On the, can you go back to that last picture, please?
Yes.
The red line is showing the, where the sidewalk is supposed to be going. Is that correct?
No, that is not correct. That is the current right-of-way.
Okay.
The proposed right-of-way, if you look at the, I guess, it would be almost where the cars are parked right now. It'd go right through the middle of them.
I'm seeing a little bit of distortion and the road goes this way and this red line's going this way. At some point, they're going to meet.
It's a, it's a.
And the road does go, it would go parallel.
Yeah, mhm.
It's the way you took the picture and you put the line in.
That's a, yeah.
It's though it's going a different way, but I was wondering. Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's an approximation. Yeah, that's, that's on me. That's my design, design error.
And then.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. If you can go back to that last picture, you know, showing, can you show us or point out where the sidewalk proposed is supposed to be going on that lot? Because it's easier to see.
Can you see my crosshairs?
Just barely, but yes.
It's, it's through the vehicles themselves. You can almost see the, where the parking lot is for Gerber to the north. It's going to be right along that edge going south. So it'll cut through, you know, the first display area cars that are on the site plan.
And how many cars are on there now?
That were from the front on that, I can't see, so I just wonder how many.
Oh, on this, on this photo, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't show all of them, but this, the, the current display area. Let me just go back real quick. The current display area has, has been site plan approved for 12 to 14 cars. No more than 14 cars, plus the five, you know, visitor parking that's in the front. So a total of, you know, it could be a total of 19 vehicles in the front.
And how many spaces would be lost?
At a, at a minimum, six of the, six of the display, display car area and the five visitor parking. This kind of, this graphic here shows it a little bit better. You can see just in front of the building towards Van Dyke, this little wedge is all that would remain of the display car area if that pathway had to go in and we met all of the parking setback requirements. I'd also like to, you know, mention that this is an existing condition. It's been there prior to 2000. You know, and in essence, you know, you're telling a, you know, a business would have to remove something that's, they're already utilized or already site plan approved for. And I understand we're coming in for a new site plan approval, but a little bit of the backstory is that in March of, you know, 2020, there was a ticket that was issued for parking too many cars in the front. So it violated the, you know, 14, maximum 14 cars in the front. And that's when the businesses were all shut down due to COVID. So with that, you know, two months later, everything was still shut down. There was, there was received a notification of going to court. So with that notification of going to court, there was no fine. There was no way of dealing with it other than going to court. So as part of that, in good faith, knowing some of the comments from the township and knowing how, you know, Mr. Burton wanted to utilize his property, he decided to go ahead and submit for site plan approval. Now, it's been in the court system and I don't know a lot about that, so I'm not going to really discuss that part of it. But I know it's been postponed a minimum of five times, you know, not, not based on Mr. Burton's actions. So in, in his good faith, he wanted to go through the site plan approval process. And in doing so, it enacted the, and this might be, again, something for the ordinance to take, you know, for them to review the ordinance. But there is not a grandfather clause anywhere in the ordinance. That's all we're asking for. We're asking for something that's already existing, already existing to be used, to remain in place. I hope that answered your question.
I believe we do have a grandfather clause. It's as long as you don't make any changes to the existing property.
Yeah.
So you can, you could continue to operate as you are today as long as you make no changes to the existing property.
Yep, and.
So that's the grandfather.
That's, yes, and I completely concur with that. Thank you. This next photo is just a shot of the frontage, you know, of, DNB is on the right, Gerber is on the left. Again, it's just showing the overhead transmission lines from ITC. It's a, it's a unique piece in the, in the community. I mean, this is zoned industrial. But, you know, it's one of the few places where it's actually running along the road frontage for this strip that goes from 20, 28 to 29 mile. Another unique part of this stretch of industrial zoned properties is it's kind of sandwiched between Van Dyke and M53. It's the perfect place for industrial zone property. Although Van Dyke is a, you know, also a major thoroughfare. We understand that. You can kind of see in this, in this particular photo, this is a shot from 28 mile to 29 mile. You can see where McComb Orchard. where McComb Orchard Trail is. It's on the east, or the west side of Van Dyke, and you can kind of see the shaded area where DNB Auto Sales is. It's almost in the, in the middle of the, you know, mile block. This is a shot from 28 mile. It's a view looking north. You can see where the Sherman Associates is on the east side of the, of Van Dyke. Kind of where it says 28 mile, just below that is a Greenfield Collision. And I believe they were in front of this board, you know, requesting a waiver for a portion of their sidewalk as well. Over to the, to the west, you can see the McComb Orchard Trail, and all of the sidewalk connections that are at the intersection, they all connect up to the McComb Orchard Trail. In the stretch of, of this mile stretch that we're talking about, there is only one business that has a, the eight-foot wide pathway installed. That's United Lawn Scape. All the rest of the properties do not. There are some significant challenges whenever this section of Van Dyke does get widened, and there's a 60-foot right-of-way. You have the ITC corridor to deal with. You have a lot of existing buildings like Sherman Associates that would basically be almost on this 60-foot right-of-way. You might have room for, you know, a five-foot walk, as opposed to an eight-foot walk. This here is just a shot at 29 mile. It shows the connection again for McComb Orchard Trail. Again, the sidewalks go on all four corners, and they all tie in directly to that McComb Orchard Trail. And again, just to reiterate, it runs right along Van Dyke, and it's in this unique portion of Van Dyke, where it's probably one of the few places that it actually does run parallel to the road. So again, I'd like to thank you for your attention and your consideration. You know, what we are hoping to do is, you know, there are other roads within the township where it has been granted that, due to existing conditions that are, you know, along that road frontage, that walk has only been installed on one side of the road. And that's what we're asking for here. We're asking that the sidewalk be the beautiful McComb Orchard Trail that is right across the street. I know that it was mentioned that, you know, one of the comments was that there weren't any crossovers to any of these businesses. These are industrial businesses. These are not ones that you walk to. In particular, DNB Auto, you know, you would drive there, you know, to go shop for a new car. Most, if not all, of these businesses, you know, would not be something that would be, you know, visited by, by either bicycles or by pedestrians, which is why you have the McComb Orchard Trail running parallel to Van Dyke and these industrial properties. That's a great option for everybody to take, you know, as a, as a safe way. You have vegetation in the way, keeps all the pedestrians safe, and it just eliminates that, you know, any potential for, you know, pedestrians walking along the, you know, that portion. I mean, most, most, you know, I guess in closing, I would just say, I don't anticipate, you know, pedestrians walking in that stretch of Van Dyke, you know, with the, with the type of businesses that they are. I do understand that there's a connection from the Mobile Home Park to the south, but as I showed on this other, other slide, there's an, there's a connection that goes right to the McComb Orchard Trail at 28 mile. So it bypasses all of these industrial businesses from 28 to 29. That's when it, that's when the McComb Orchard Trail kind of kicks off to the east, you know, as it heads up towards Bruce Township. So again, I'm here to answer any questions, you know, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Joel, I just have a question. If you could explain to us and the residents
Yeah.
What is the changes that are occurring on that property?
Yes, the changes. The changes that are going on in the property is, you know, paving in the rear of the building. The business is growing. There's a need for additional spaces to, you know, stage cars prior to them going on sale. There's also a need, you know, there's the five visitor parking that's in the front, you know, staff, you know, would pretty much take up most of that right now. So, you know, having places for employees to park, you know, and then also having some areas to, to stage the cars before they're sold. So we're asking and looking to pave the rear of the building for 21 spaces. We're also constructing a dumpster enclosure. Currently, the dumpster is almost by M53, but that is being, you know, relocated up to the edge of this pavement. The whole purpose of this is that the owner was under the impression that he could put down gravel and be able to park cars, because most of the industrial properties in this area have gravel, and they can park on, park on that. You know, it's been brought to his attention that that's against what the ordinance states, and that all parked cars need to be on paved surfaces. So this is the revised plan based on those discussions with the township and township staff to, you know, work through those, work through those items.
So I'm taking, since you've put an impervious material down, you have to have a drain, some drainage, as we just talked about earlier?
Correct. Correct.
There's a retention pond or detention?
There, there is. You know, this is just a blow-up so everybody could see it better. This last picture, kind of, you know, it's, it's very great out. I apologize. That was more for the thank you. But there's a onsite detention that would be here. Everything drains from Van Dyke all the way to M53. You know, the existing pavement would be, you know, pitched in such a way that it would just surface drain right to this, you know, detention pond.
Do you know if the grandfather clause is structural related only, meaning that if you do structural changes, then the grandfather clause is then gone? Or if you just add on additional parking lot, not attaching the building at all, does that affect the grandfather clause?
I, I don't have the answer for that.
Okay, if you want to, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know anything about natural beauty roads, but that I know. The, the law of non-conforming use says that if you have illegal non-conforming use, meaning legal before an ordinance requirement went into effect, you can maintain that legal non-conforming use in perpetuity. But what the law will not let you do is expand it or modify it. So it has to stay a snapshot in time. So if the ordinance went into effect, I'm going to make up a date, year 2000, and it was legal as of 2000, you take a snapshot of what it looked like at 2000, you can continue to use it no matter what, how the ordinance has changed, zoning ordinance has changed. You can continue to use it, but you may not expand it until you comply with the, the most current zoning ordinance requirement. So any changes to the site that they're going to make that are structural, whether it's the building, whether it's the parking lot, whether you name it, if they change it and expand it, it's an expansion of illegal non-conforming use, and they're going to have to comply with current zoning.
Does that also go with usage? If they were to switch and turn into something else, that, that site plan would no longer be good, or?
It depends what the use is. I mean, if, if the use, in an industrial zone, it's permitted or it's not permitted. So if it's, they go from one permitted use to another, that wouldn't be a problem. But if they structurally start changing it, the site gets larger, the law, the law, the purpose of the law is to get rid of non-conforming uses. That's why they won't let you expand them. That's why if you had a, say, a residential home on a piece of property that got rezoned to industrial, that house burns to the ground, you can't rebuild it, because it's a, your vested rights are gone. And so, they can do what they did back when they, it was legal, but if they're going to expand it at all, they're going to have to go to the Planning Commission, or they're going to have to go to the Planning Commission and the zoning board of appeals.
Which is what we've done, and
Yeah, and they're, they're doing it apparently the right way.
Yeah.
But they're, they're planned by the rules.
Your property goes all the way to, almost to M53, because when I head southbound on M53, I can see the back of your lot, your DNB sign and that. And I see vehicles parked back there.
Mm-hmm.
And yet, nowhere on your site plan do you show vehicles being parked in that area. What's that about?
Yeah, that's, that's part of why we're here. It's, it's removing that gravel that goes into the, into the back, and it was because we were instructed that we could only park on paved surfaces. So that, what we're showing here in this proposed site plan is the only places where the cars would go.
So the cars that are much further beyond where the retention pond is going to go?
They will not be there.
There will be no park, parking there, where you currently do have parking going on.
That is correct.
You have like a tent or some kind of enclosure in back? What is that?
That's just a temporary structure. I think it's just keeping, you know, some tires dry, I believe.
Temporary?
Yeah. It's just a temporary structure. Yep.
And are you before the planning commission right now, too?
This is our, this is our third board. We're in front of. Yep.
I know you're before the ZBA and the planning commission, and now us. I'm kind of confused on who has what authority to do what right now. If our planning commission is working with you.
Well, I'll give you the, I'll give you the, the short history. We went in front of the planning commission. Planning commission said, well, we can't make a motion, you know, on your, approving your site plan until you get variances approved by the ZBA. So then we went to the ZBA. The ZBA said, well, we've decided that, you know, until we know for sure if a pathway is going to be required, we're not going to take action on that. So we're in front of you because the, the pathway, even though it's a variance request, it's not in front of the ZBA, it's in front of the township board. So now we've gone to our third board, paid additional review fees for one more decision.
And then if we, if we deny it, what would you do?
If it's, if it's denied, I'd have to, you know, huddle with the owner and, and see. You know, at that, at that point, you know, it's, it's basically no proposed paving is, you know, the proposed paving would have to go, well, I guess we'd have to go back to the ZBA. Sorry, I'm just trying to think through the process here, but we would have to go back to the ZB, ZBA and find out if they would still grant us ordinance. You know, most likely they would not.
The ZBA does not
Everything is
The ZBA does not have the authority to grant variances on sidewalks.
Well, no, no, it's not for the sidewalk.
It's for the side setbacks.
This is for the parking setbacks.
Yeah.
Going back, you can see it on, a little clearer on this one. We would go back in front of the ZBA, you know, in regards to the, you know, ten, minimum 10-foot parking setback is what is required, you know. And according to the township attorney, you know, it sounds like just by adding pavement to the back of the property, then our front, front paving, if I'm understanding that correctly, is, is, you know, being modified. Our, our site is being modified, is the correct interpretation? So with that, you know, ideally, you know, we would prefer to, you know, keep it, you know, keep it the same and, you know, have some, have some gravel, but, you know, we're, we're kind of stuck by, you know, we need, need to have some additional cars. We have the room to park the vehicles. I mean, it's a, it's a 1.1 acre site. You know, what you see, unfortunately, this is one of those instances where the building is, is right up on Van Dyke. You know, there's a lot of non-conforming items, you know. So as far as a, you know, a grandfather clause, it's, you know, the building does not meet that, you know, setback. So I mean, there's, where does that line drawn in the sand? That's our argument. You know, it affects not only the display car area, the visitor parking area. It displays how the business is run.
What's the estimated cost to put the sidewalk in?
Estimated cost, this was just using, you know, the, the same number, you know, would
Would the board, like what we said earlier about the easement, I think the 4,000 or somewhere else? After all the
So I guess what Sam is trying to, if I'm
Yeah, yeah.
If I may, is allow the township grant us the easement, no sidewalk, but the sidewalk that would expense the sidewalk clock. Turn it over to the township so we can continue the connectivity with the sidewalk funds.
You're nuts.
Yeah. So
I mean, here, can I approach the video?
Yeah.
I was told not to talk, but I can sit and
Every salesman needs to talk.
I'm not a salesman.
Okay.
I own a dealership. I'm in front of the board, and this is ridiculous to me. I opened my business in 2013. I got a ticket in 2013 for having too many cars on my lot. I came to Washington Township, sat down with Dana and Mike, and said, look, I can't stay in business if I have this restriction. Mike comes out to my property, says, you know what? Keep 14 to 16 cars in front, put as many as you want in the back, don't price them. Fine. Eight years go by. I've been doing business like this for eight years. All of a sudden, this man comes out and gives me a ticket, when I'm closed for too many cars. My business is not even open. It's COVID. Okay, so now I'm going to court over a ticket that has no fine, nothing. I tried to pay it, get rid of it. The only thing I had to do, I got to come in front of you guys, the board, and get approval for a site plan. I'm parking cars on gravel. Millings. I've had the millings there for seven years. Never an issue. Sarah just opened this monster dealership. They're parking cars on gravel and in a field, and that's okay. The body shop next door to me is dragging cars in on a tow truck, leaking oil, fluid, everything on gravel next to me. And here I am in front of you guys trying to get another 21 spots to park a car. You want me to put a sidewalk in somewhere down Van Dyke, no lighting, car's doing 65 miles an hour. I know it's because my police officer sits in my parking lot, gives tickets, and you think that's right? This makes no sense to me. None whatsoever. Who's going to walk down Van Dyke on a sidewalk, under power lines, at night? I mean, I'm, I'm just dumbfounded at this whole process.
That's not what I, that's not what I suggested.
Well, I'm just telling you how I went through this. This is, this is, this has been a year going on here, being
I can see your frustration.
Jumped around here.
I can see your frustration.
I've been in front of boards, written checks to you guys. I've been fined. I've been ticketed. I paid all my fines. I've got permits. For everything you guys asked me to do, I've done. And I'm being treated like this. As a business owner, it's, it's unbelievable to me.
But that's why I came up with the suggestion to try to help you out. I mean, I can't change the past. All we're trying to do is, what we could try to
Yeah, but the problem is, is the past is the past. Everybody knows the past, but no one seems to step up and wants to make it right. You want me to pay you $4,000? For what? For the hassle you put me through? Make everybody happy? Here, I'll write you a check. Can I go, can you guys go away and write you a check? Can I, site plan, if I write you a check, four grand? And that's just what you're asking me to maybe do? I'm sorry if I've assaulted anybody here, and I apologize. This has been going on for a year. It should never have happened. I keep a beautiful business. There's no garbage, there's no junk. There's no junk cars. It's beautiful. Flowers, I make it nice. It's never a piece of garbage. I just don't get it. And that's all I got to say.
Pat, can I ask you to step up to the mic and explain the ticket? And I actually want to know more about the past eight years with Mike and Dana allowing what happened to happen. Because was that allowed by the ordinance back then, or were we just letting things happen?
Yeah, I can't speak to the past, you know, in terms of what happened and how we got to the point of where we are with the site. You know, obviously, it's a tight site, very tight site for this type of operation. It's non-conforming, as Bob explained. And, you know, as we try to move towards improvement on the north end of Van Dyke, which is one of the goals specified by the Planning Commission most recently, you know, there are going to have to be some tough decisions made by the township. You know, at the point in time when the tickets were written, there was too many cars parked out front. I was alert, brought to I was alert, brought to, I guess I was informed of the violation. I went out with Mike. And at that point in time, notified the applicant that he would have to make some changes. They weren't made, so we issued a ticket. I don't recall if I issued it or if Mike issued the ticket, but none of us.
So there was a time period between when you originally went out and inspected to when you wrote the ticket? Because no corrections were made.
Yeah, I don't recollect. I'd have to research that.
Okay, that's what I thought I just heard you say.
Yeah.
Patrick, while you're standing there, I heard a comment made that there's also something that there's a 80-foot requirement about setback for parking lot frontage?
Yes, that's correct.
So obviously that's going to have to have a variance also?
Uh, they are requesting a variance to that front yard setback, yes.
Okay, so the sidewalk is inside of that 80-foot setback?
Yep, that setback is intended in part to accommodate for a sidewalk, but, you know, obviously the sidewalk's required to be inside the 60-foot right of way, proposed right of way.
Okay, so I'm, I'm looking at this and saying if this board approves the sidewalk and ZBA does not approve the 80-foot setback, we're just sitting here spinning our wheels. We're wasting time.
Well, at that point in time, I would suspect that if the ZBA denied it, then the applicant may want to return to the board with new conditions, but, you know.
They would be asking us for a variance on the 80-foot setback for the parking.
I guess you could look at it either way. You know, if you guys were to approve a variance and the planning commi, or the ZBA denies a variance to the front, you, you know, you've got the opposite issue, so. Someone's got to take a lead on one of the decisions with regard to whether or not there's going to be waivers to the ordinance.
You know, I said this before with another business that's now, they're looking at going down to green space and building fresh, right? And I said, sometimes we just outgrow a spot, which means you've done good business, you've had a lot of good years and, and sometimes you just gotta grow, kind of like Romeo Ford's doing right now. You know, they're popping a, a nice big retail lot over there at 30 Mile and Van Dyke and M53. You know, because they're just growing. And sometimes that's the result of, of good business. Is that you just outgrow what you have and you have to make those tough decisions.
Can I first report that?
Yeah. Yes.
I have not outgrown my property. I'm doing the same business I've been doing for the last nine years. I don't sell more cars. I've done the same thing for nine years that I was okay to do. So I'm not increasing my inventory. I'm just trying to keep it to where you guys are happy with it all of a sudden. Because there's not a problem.
That's not what I just heard.
No, I'm just telling you as an owner, I'm telling you right now, talking to you, as I'm not going to run my business. It's not outgrowing. I still sell 30 cars a month, doing it for nine years. It's not a problem. I've, enough property is there for me. I want to say one more thing about the whole ticket thing. They came out, him and Mike, to my property before COVID and we walked the property. And I showed him where I have the slag, where I park my cars. And he says, well, we'll work with you guys. I said, great, I'm ready to work with you guys. COVID hit. We were shut down. You were gone. I couldn't go in front of the board. They weren't working. I couldn't get a site plan into you guys at that time. Then I got the ticket. It was a coward move. I'm here to help, to do anything I need to do. I should, I showed you guys that in the beginning and I'm still here now trying to get this done. I did not outgrow my property. I did the same business I did when I opened the business up. It's not changed. I'm just trying to get it to where you guys are happy with it.
The, sorry Brody, so the ticket was issued because you were parking too many cars, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm saying like if you comply and park whatever you're supposed to and just go back to the way it was, would that alleviate all this?
Yeah, yeah. The problem is I could do business the way it was, but you guys don't want me to park on, on the millings. Like everybody else doesn't do it, I'm sure.
No, yeah.
If I can park my cars in the millings and not price them, I'm good, like I've been doing. That's all. I, I mean, I, I don't need to put blacktop. I don't want to spend the money, to be honest with you, but I will do it if I have to. It makes everybody happy.
Where, where are they parking on millings? I, I can't visualize any place in the township that they are.
Oh, you park next door to Greenfield Collision, down the street. You made the, the whole brand new building, new parking lot. If you haven't drive by there tomorrow, see where their cars are parked. It's not on a new prop, not on new asphalt. It's parked in the gravel. And I've pointed out to Patrick also.
Have we been out there and to inspect that? So.
And then you got, or you got.
Do we have a code enforcement officer that could go look at that?
Yeah. Romeo Ford, you're staying there and expanding, which is great. They, they got all the money to do that. It's a million dollar, $10 million business. It's just awesome. But where they're building business right now, they're parking on stones that you put in your landscaping for cars on their property. I took pictures, sent them to the board. You guys probably never seen them.
If you sent them to the prior board, no, we would not have.
No. Well, I sent them to the last guy, but he didn't want to call me back. Sarah's parking on grass. That's okay. They just put the new building up. They're parking on grass. Soreno's Pizza just put in a new parking lot. They put millings down to park their cars on. Not asphalt, millings. That's okay? I'm not trying to be difficult, you guys. I want to just run my business in Washington. I love being here. I love the area. Love the people. My mother just bought a condo over here. But I just don't understand what's going on.
I think a lot of us are just trying to understand what's going on.
Yeah, me too.
We don't have the history, right?
Me too. Thanks.
I got a, a question that I, maybe you could answer before you sit down or after you sit down. There was some work that was done on the parking lot in conjunction with Samaritan House that I think you guys had helped them out with. Is that correct? You had done some surfacing, resurfacing, some asphalt, something or another?
I worked really close to Samaritan House.
Mm-hmm.
I did their whole, resurfaced the whole property, lined it. I plowed them for them. They used the parking lot that we're talking about, the millings they park during the holidays. They got so many people, they parked there. I didn't charge them a thing. I helped them out anywhere I can. They've sent you two letters, letting you know how great a neighbor I am and how I helped their community out over there.
Did any of that work include, I'm sorry Sam.
No, no.
Did any of that work include expansion of the asphalted area or did you just re-ashault what was already there?
I just re-ashault what was already there.
Okay. Is there any opportunity for you to work out something with Samaritan House in terms of parking?
I do. And during the house, during the weekend when they're closed, they allow me to park some cars on that side for display. During the week I don't. They're open. They got as many cars going through there as I do. We both utilize the place, the, the parking in the back, they both, we both utilize that. You drive by there now, there's one car. Drive by there tomorrow, might be three.
Yeah.
The most cars they keep on the lot at one time is 30 cars. At the most. That's very rare. Problem I have in the back is I keep the cars in the back staging. When I saw one in the front, I can just bring it up and replace it. That's all I'm doing. I'm not selling from beyond the building. Any more questions before I sit down? What do you want, Sam?
No, no, I, I mean, I, I just keep going back to that. Like you got the ticket because you had too many cars of, you promised to park the number of cars. I think that's kind of a moot point. Maybe I'm.
Well, I got the ticket. Like I said, I was doing the legwork before I got the ticket, but nothing was open. It was COVID. We weren't open. You guys weren't open. They weren't open. I couldn't do anything, go any further with it that we agreed upon doing. And then I got the ticket.
I mean.
I can't even pay, there's no fine to pay the ticket. I can't get rid of the ticket unless I go to court. When I go to court, they postpone it because there's no site plan approval. It just makes no, I paid 250 an hour to my attorney to sit there and go, okay, you got to hang the call. We're done. It's ridiculous.
Yeah, Bob. I mean, am I oversimplifying it or am I, if you were just to comply with the number of.
You know what, Sam, I don't, I don't have a history on this file. I mean, no, seriously, Christine goes to the planning commission. We don't attend ZBA unless and as needed, so I don't know what's going on at the ZBA. Chris would know what's going on at the planning commission. I'll certainly talk to her about it tomorrow. I suspect the reason that the district court keeps getting adjourned, and I don't know this, but I suspect that the parties have agreed that they'll continue to adjourn the district court until they can work this out at the township level. And if they can, the case will likely be dismissed. That's, that's why we do all of the, you know, the non-criminal type cases. Is you try to work with the, the owner to get compliance and once there's compliance, you dismiss it. You know, we're not out to kill anybody. We're out to just get compliance. And so that's probably what's going on. And I would be willing to bet that their attorney is asking for the same adjournment that we're granting, but I don't know that, so.
Yeah, they, they have a, a court date on the 22nd of this month, so.
I'd be willing to bet it continues to get adjourned while they're working through this process. Getting it resolved in court doesn't help you because the worst the judge is going to do is issue a fine. But that just gets your, that just gets that headache away. It doesn't solve this problem. That district court doesn't have the authority to solve these problems. It just says, is there a violation? Yes. I'll give you an extra $100 fine. Done. That's what that case is about. But we would rather get compliance rather than get a fine.
If, if there's a site plan change, if, if he decides he doesn't want to do anything other than run his business the way he's been running it in the past, we can withdraw the, the court action against him?
Absolutely. We can dismiss it at any time.
Just dismiss it and we, and we're done.
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm.
And I, I think that's what you're going after and I, I'm looking at the owner and I'm going, is that acceptable to you?
Except for he can't park vehicles in the back.
Exactly, because it's on millings.
But then it's.
I agree, but he knows that.
He's got that little piece of asphalt that he can park on, correct?
That as, as part of that site plan approval, there was no, you know, no extra paving behind. I mean, there's, there's a driveway, you know, and that's where the, the extra millings pick up from there.
So does he have enough paved area in the back right now to do his business? If all this other ticket stuff goes away? No.
It's, with the millings, yeah. I mean, he can operate now.
Without the millings.
But yeah, then, you know, the millings would have to be paved, which is, you know, which is why we're in front of a site plan.
All right. Is there anything this board can do to give him authorization to put blacktop in, to park his cars on without having to go through the, the front parking structure, pathway?
Those are planning commission site plan issues.
It falls back on me. Thanks alone.
Can we do?
The township board doesn't have the authority?
Can we do the variance on the sidewalk provided planning commission passes?
Yeah, you could do exactly what you did. Again, if that's what you're asking me, you could, if, if that's, I understand the, the circle that gentleman is raising, that it does sometimes get difficult because one body will say, geez, we're willing to approve it, but we don't know what the other body is going to do. And now it's more, even more complicated because only this board can give the sidewalk variance. But if you wanted to give the planning commission and the ZBA some relief, you could say, we are prepared to grant the variance if the site plan is approved and whatever variances you need are approved. In other words, say to the planning commission, the ZBA, don't get hung up on the sidewalk issue. Review the site plan and the variance request as if the sidewalk is not required. And if they can, if they can get through those two hurdles, then our promise would be that it'll go away. But if, if for some reason they don't get the variance or the, or the planning commission doesn't buy into the site plan revision, then, then we're back where we started. But that certainly would be a logical way to address it.
Yeah, no, that's, that's exactly. I mean, that would be my suggestion or motion.
I want to hear you repeat that.
My, my motion.
That's all I know.
My motion would be to allow the variance provided that the ZBA and planning, whatever requirements from both of them are approved by both of those boards.
I'll second that.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, that's spot on. That's exactly what it would be.
Yeah. You didn't say, short-winded either.
You know, yeah.
I was trying to explain something.
So his next move after this board would be PC or ZBA?
I don't know where it is in the process. I don't know that, but apparently the ZBA and planning commission were concerned about looking at what they had for them.
Right, I understand that.
Because they were concerned about the sidewalk.
Right.
With that problem eliminated, they can now go forward and look at it as if there's no sidewalk requirement.
I'm, I'm asking as if I'm the applicant. So where do I go to next, Patrick? Pardon?
This will be going back to the ZBA.
Okay, come back to the ZBA and then from there, depending upon what happens, it either stops there or it goes back to the PC.
No. It's going to go back to the PC regardless. So if the ZBA approves, organizes the variance, the planning commission will still have to take action on the site plan. Obviously, if the ZBA denies the variance, the planning commission has no authority to approve the site plan.
Thank you.
But the planning commission could approve the site plan then with the variances approved by ZBA, approved by here because of the variance on the sidewalk. And could we make that conditional upon adding the correct amount of asphalt in the back for him to park his cars on?
He's already indicating that on the new site plan.
Okay, okay, so that would be all part of the deal then?
Sounds like that's a plan.
And then wouldn't there be another part of it there that the ticket would kind of just go away at that point?
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
Look, the, the ticket, the board, this board doesn't have a jurisdiction over the ticket.
Okay.
I can tell you the policy of our office always is if there's compliance, we dismiss the case. So it may very well be, and I'll, I'll bet you that Christine has already talked to this gentleman's attorney that if they, they're, they're moving forward on it, they're going to continue to adjourn the case. Remember, you back up, when this ticket was issued, it was issued because the township perceived there was a ordinance violation. And that's what code enforcement does. When there's an ordinance violation that can't get worked out, you issue a ticket. Purpose of the ticket is to get the, the individual to comply. The impetus to comply is, there's technically, you know, it's a misdemeanor under our ordinance technically, but it's, jail's not a real possibility, but you can get a $500 fine. There's so, and you got to hire a lawyer. So there's, there's encouragement to get the thing resolved. When they're resolved, we dismiss the case.
Okay.
We do it in every instance, except, you know, there may be some rare case, but in 99% of the cases, if there's compliance, we dismiss it. That's all we're trying to do is get ordinance compliance.
I think we're all on the same page.
Yeah, they're certainly going, jumping over the hoops between the board, the zoning board of appeals and the planning commission to address the problem. So I assure you that if they're going to continue to do that and it's worked out, the case will go away.
Yeah, that's, that's all we wanted to do is, you know, come, come through, you know, do it the right way. You know, we're going through this, but we're just kept getting bounced, bounced around and there wasn't somebody that was able to make that executive decision. My, my concern, I guess this was part of the, you know, from the ZBA, was part of their, their motion was that, you know, they have specific variance, you know, dimensional variances that they have to get. So they didn't want to, you know, this board is willing to do a condition, you know, with conditions that have to be met. I, the ZBA was not willing to do that. We actually asked for that at the, the ZBA. So is that something that the township is willing to do? I don't know if that's a question for Mr. Seba.
That goes back to the ZBA.
Well, I know it goes back to the ZBA. We have those three variants or four variances that we're still going after to be in compliance and we would go after those, you know, as long as this waiver goes, goes away. You know, but my, my question is that, you know, then at that point, you know, is it, this is a conditional? We asked for the conditional, you know, just to get a response if we were wasting our time? Or if it's, if it's something that needed to be done at the ZBA? I just want to make sure we're going to keep moving forward and get a decision.
If ZBA should deny it, then he'd come back here again?
Well, your, your motion was that you are going to, you are going to approve the variance, eliminating the need for the sidewalk so long as he gets ZBA and planning commission approval. If he does not get those approvals, you know, we don't know the reason why the ZBA may turn him down or why the planning commission may turn him down. So he certainly has the opportunity to come back here and say, look, the reason they turned this down is this. And it may be a, you know, you'll have to deal with it.
So at that point, we would have to come back to the board. If we get denied by the, you know, the ZBA, then basically we're back to square one again. And, you know, we wouldn't have to go to the planning commission at that point because we don't have the variances that we need. So then we would come back to this board to petition, you know, a site plan approval? That's kind of the process?
No, this, this board cannot grant site plan approval. Site plan approval jurisdiction rests with the planning commission, period. He's, they're only here because of the sidewalk, because the ordinance is set up and it gives you the authority to, to, to grant the sidewalk waiver. That's the only reason they're here. Everything else that's going on in this site are garden variety, planning commission, ZBA issues that they deal with every month.
And I think the question you're trying to ask is if you get turned down at the ZBA, can you come back to this board? And correct me if I'm wrong, but typically when we deny at the ZBA. And, correct me if I'm wrong, but typically, when we deny at the ZBA.
It's going to get denied.
We don't offer them that alternative.
But they can, but they can change whatever they're asking for in the planning commission.
They can, they can change it, and then go back out for publication again and start all over. Is that correct?
Yeah, as long as they change that.
Pardon?
As long as they change the request by a certain footage or something, whatever the request is.
So, at that point, it would be a brand-new submittal that we start from square one?
You know, you're speculating on what's going to happen.
Well, I know I'm speculating, but we've been bounced, we've been bounced around from board to board to board, and I just wanted to know what the end goal is. Like, where we get to, you know, either an approval or a denial? You know, like what we're gonna do with the, with the site, and.
None of us have a crystal ball.
No, no, I.
None of us have a crystal ball, and until we get through this, then you go to the ZBA, and you know what happens there, then you go to the PC.
I mean, by having this variance, the ZBA may look at it, this, in a different way. I, I don't, I don't know what.
No.
Holdup is either on the ZBA side.
It was, it was, we have no idea what's going to happen with the sidewalk, so.
Yeah, no, I'm saying, this may alleviate that concern.
So they may look at it differently, if, if it's, if it's okay with the township board to, uh, to waive that, that walk.
Yeah.
What was the motion again?
Do you want me to say it?
I wanted to make sure I'm saying the exact same thing.
No, so, my motion, seconded by Nicely, was to allow the variance, provided that the ZBA and Planning Commission approve whatever.
The remaining variances.
Yeah, the remaining variances submitted to those boards.
I thought we were approving to vacate the variance. I think we're giving.
Yeah, we're allowing the variance on the sidewalk.
Yeah.
But then they still got other variances to deal with.
Yep.
I didn't get that last part, but that's all the first part, that's what I had, but you added the rest of it.
Okay. We'll keep changing. Sorry, any comments from the audience before, any questions? Um, there's a motion on the table. If there's no questions, I guess roll call.
Pravidi?
Yes.
Nicely?
Yes.
Babinski's a yes, Olson?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Tautowski?
Yes.
Polad?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Motion passed, thank you.
No, I appreciate your time.
Good luck in the rest of the process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I want to thank Brody too, I know he's a good neighbor to Samaritan House, and I know they appreciate all the stuff he does for them.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, item 9.6 is the newly added DPW purchases, the emergency purchases, and the budgeted radios. If Rich is awake back there, if he'd like to come up, we'll ask him a few questions. Um, I, I submitted this to the board.
He's a little stiff.
He can, he can explain it better than me, but, um, the two items are emergency items due to the flooding and heavy rainfall. The air conditioners on the sewer plant were overheating, so we had to replace those at 3906.92, and, um, the sensors as well, at 7288. So, because they're long lead items, they just came in, we had to hurry up and order them, and, um, they'll be installed in the next few days. But, I'll let you ask.
But not the radios? The radios, I've been after for.
Well, the radios are getting board approval.
Six, six years, all our vehicles do not have communication in them besides a cell phone. And everyone that lives around here knows that, we're having some bad issues with Verizon and AT&amp;T. We've been after these radios for a little bit, we even tried to get them with the COVID grant.
Yeah, with the county grant that time, we applied for it, and it got denied by the county.
They denied it, so I put it on our budget.
It was put on the budget.
Yeah, Bonnie put it on the budget, and, because we need them. We went through that flood the other day, we couldn't even talk to the fire department because we couldn't get through.
Yeah, like Rich had to come to my house to pick me up, our phones kept breaking up.
Yeah, you can't, that's the main reason, you need them for emergency. This 800-meg radios will get us through to the fire, to other communities if we have to, Shelby Town, so, they all have them. So, why they took the radios out in the first place, I know they were probably getting old, I don't even know what they had, but you can't operate without two ways of trying to talk to somebody in this business.
And just so you know, with the COVID, that last grant that we got from the county, that was denied, not because it's not something that's needed, it had to be related to how it was going to be affecting during COVID. So, they didn't view that as something that was essential for the COVID purchase, they says it's essential service that you should already have, but not under their program in which we are qualifying stuff.
We gave it our best shot.
Yeah.
Yeah, to try to get it, to get paid for, but the.
And that price was, I want to say it was a little bit lower then, but a little bit higher now.
No, it's the exact same quote from December.
Oh, that's right, you did tell me that, it was going to be the exact.
Since December, it's the same quote, so.
Hey, Rich, is there any way in the future we can start getting the bids that go with these, instead of just a purchase rec?
On, on maybe the radios, if I had, uh.
Well, like the air conditioners and that, because I'm kind of curious.
The air conditioner, I, I didn't have.
What kind of air conditioners, how many BTUs?
I didn't have time for, for the emergency, okay?
Because I'm looking at 3906, and that's cheap for an air conditioner. I don't know what size area it is, so I don't know what kind of heat calculations were done on this right here.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if they have pictures floating around, I should have brought them, but I didn't bring it.
Yeah, is this through the wall of the?
No, it sits on the, outside of a control panel that's outside at the treatment plant.
So it's, so the, the control panel is outside in the weather?
Right.
And so it's a stainless steel?
Correct.
Okay, and.
And it has to have a controlled environment.
Right, right, I'm very familiar with that, that's my area of expertise. So, uh, these were properly sized then?
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure that these guys aren't undersizing it, and next thing you know, and, because it doesn't sound, those panels haven't been there that long that these ACs should have failed.
Yeah, there could have been an issue, I'm only taking a guess, maybe something from moisture when we first opened up there, but I, you know, I can't tell now.
Yeah, no, not in those type, more, you know, that, that's why you get the stainless steel.
Yeah. Now, the other one, uh, PRV that went out, that was from the rain, it just filled the whole station, and it sits, sits over there by Sorento's.
Okay, just if you, just in the future, if we could.
Yeah, if I, I'll do the best I can.
You know, and, and, uh, so that we can get, create some competitive bids. I understand in an emergency, you can't do that, you need it, get it done.
What I'm doing right now is, the guy is, actually, it's probably going to go in, like Sam said, today, well, not today, tomorrow and the next day, we've been opening that door. Thank God we haven't had the real hot weather again, but that's what knocked it, it was during that time, that stuff can't take heat.
Yeah.
But I'm with you, if I can, I will.
Okay, that's all I'm asking, thank you. I have no issue with, with this otherwise.
Okay.
Any questions from the audience? Any other questions from the board?
So, I'll make a motion that we approve the emergency purchases in radio, budgeted radios, air conditioners at the price of 3,000 906.92, the one flood switch, two PVR position sensors, and pressure sensors at the cost of 7,288, and the purchase of the budgeted portable radios, uh, at the price of 3, 35,614.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Babinski, seconded by Dacowski. If no questions, roll call.
Babinski's a yes, Tautowski?
Yes.
Polad?
Yes.
Nicely?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Pravidi?
Yes.
And Olson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you, and I gotta check something in my truck out there, so.
You'll be right back, though, right? I might call you again.
Thanks, Rich.
Okay, next item is 9.7.
Yep.
The discussion of ZBA and PC processes.
Yeah. I can, I'll set this up. This was something that was talked about in Planning Commission probably about three months ago, maybe, maybe even longer than that, that we should set up some kind of a, a committee, basically, to come up with a process by which we control the flow of documents that come into PC and come into ZBA. And it was an example of this that came up just last week, I think it was. McDonald's came in with drawings that were dated on July the 2nd. Uh, it was a holiday weekend, the drawings were turned over to the Planning Commission, and, uh, we were expected to make decisions on those drawings, basically, four or five days later. Uh, and at the time, our community director hadn't even had the time to review those drawings. So, uh, I've done some skunk work in the background, and looked around to some of the other communities, and I know some of the other folks have done some also. And, uh, basically what I learned is, is they have a 30-day moratorium on receiving new information. They said, if it comes in on the 29th day, it doesn't go on the next meeting, it goes on the one that follows. So, I'm just looking for a process by which we can all hang our hat on, that says 30 days are out, and, uh, we will accept it, if it's inside the 30 days, we will reject it and put it on the, the, uh, the meeting following. So what I would recommend is, is that we put together a committee, and I know Dana put out a letter today, and, uh, she had a recommendation on there, I'd like to expand that recommendation even more. Um, my recommendation would be to put Barry Miller on, Bob Sacco, and include Pat Maher, and Cindy Knight, and Carol Marshall, to be a five-person panel. And my opinion is, and I'm.
Along with Dana?
Yeah, along with Dana, of course.
So a six-person panel?
Yep, a six, six-person total. Uh, would be to come up with a, a plan by which we all can agree to, I mean, 30 days is my arbitrary number, it could be 15 days, it could be, whatever they decide, is enough time for us to make a decision on the information given to us, and, uh, let them come back to this committee and, uh, make a recommendation, and, uh, for us to follow through with.
And Gary, to expand on that a little bit here, uh, we just saw it tonight with DNB Auto. They've gone to ZBA, they've gone to PC, and now here, they're in front of the BOT, and it's like, that's not doing our residents any justice at all. So we need to look at things like that, is, and, uh, when variances are needed, and, and put that into the policy and say, okay, to what order should these people appear, in front of what boards? And, and maybe we can help smooth the transition a little bit, and make the flow a little bit better.
Isn't this something that the department heads, or the ZBA and the PC should be doing instead of this board?
This is a committee that we're, where we, uh, that should be looking at this right here, they are the ones that have a lot of knowledge into this. Uh, and having, uh, different views on this right here, people with different expertise is going to mean a lot. So I, I totally support, uh, Gary's suggestion on this, to put a committee together. We do this in, in, in many areas at the township.
Well, Dana's already setting up with both department heads, I, I'd like to see that go forward, see what they come up with, and then we'll pick it up from there.
And just one of the issues too, that came up several times, is there were items coming to the ZBA that probably should have gone to Planning Commission first, and partially that's why they've been bounced back and forth. But sometimes I know the.
It was never like that before. Before, you had to follow a process. You guys a few years ago changed it, that you could go bouncing back and forth, and that's, I think, caused.
No, ZBA never did that.
ZBA never did.
No, never did that. Because we had, we had issues that were coming before us, and, but, but again, it's my understanding too, that the applicants can, cannot go to the Planning Commission, they can go straight, straight to ZBA, and then that creates, you know, the bounce back, you know, back and forth to, to a lot of, you know, applicants. And I think that's unfair to them too. But I mean, maybe the committee can come up with a good solution, uh, or maybe the ordinance is, you know, I don't know, but, uh, several times we've had that happen.
So Gary, would that be your motion?
That would be my motion, I would like to create a, uh.
Isn't this, isn't this causing, this is like, pro, pro, daily.
No, this is a committee that we're.
This is an advisory committee.
And I'm saying, I'm not, I'm not nominating somebody that I don't even know if they want the job, I'm not doing that.
We already know they do, they've.
Well, I, I don't, I don't care if you said that. I, I, I don't even have verbal confirmation they want to serve, and you want me to appoint someone. The PC and the ZBA are under the supervisor eye. I'm saying for now.
No, they're under the board.
It works for both of them. I'm saying, you guys are pulling the trigger on something, you're insulting a department head who's been doing the job for 23 years, we have a planner who's been doing it a whole lifetime, and you want to put two people on there that have just been appointed, uh, a year or two ago?
And the planner, and the township planner.
I'm fine with the planner, I didn't say not the planner. I'm saying, they've already worked it out, you guys, you picked your chairmans, the chairman's on the committee, I think it's a done deal, let them talk it over, you guys are still not happy, then come back and do that. I'm not going to appoint people on a committee that I don't even know if they want to serve on there.
Well, I think we've already.
Which is leading up to another pro, thing that we're getting to next, but.
It was, it was said earlier that if you don't make mistakes, you're not making progress. Let these guys work the internal processes that they have out for themselves, instead of having people who aren't working the process try to dictate what they need to do.
Then, I, if, if that's the case, I'm not sure where to, where to go with this, because we've already had.
I would say let them have the meeting, let them report back to both of you.
I have the floor, Sam, thanks.
Well, I thought I was the chair, but, okay.
Okay, well, go ahead, speak, please.
I did, I already said what I had to say, so now you have the floor.
Can I speak? Okay.
Speak.
We've, uh, the original letter from, sorry? Oh, I thought somebody said something. The original letter from Dana basically has Bob Sacco and Barry Miller on there, there's no mention of our community director at all. I don't think that's right, I don't think that's fair.
Patrick, would you like to be on that committee?
I'd be happy to assist in that.
Okay.
Okay.
I, I know Dana reached out to him, she offered.
It's not in the letter, so it just seemed obvious to me that Patrick should be part of this committee.
I have no objection.
He has all the wisdom.
The strangest part of that letter is the BCC. Who was blind copied on that letter, because we don't know?
I have no idea.
Who was this letter sent to, and why are we blind copying people-
I don't know.
On an email, in a transparent community like we are?
Everything's foible.
No, that's not acceptable.
Everything's foible, foible tomorrow.
That's not acceptable.
I don't even have this. I didn't get this. So only you guys got it?
No.
This letter? I, I never, did it come out like just before this meeting tonight?
I think it was sent to the ZBA and the Planning-
I think that's what it says.
Because I never saw it.
It says PC and ZBA members, so yeah, you probably didn't get it.
I didn't get it.
We, we don't know who got it.
No.
I've never, ever received any email from any board that ever blind copied. I think that is terrible.
All I know is from, I've been watching as many PC and ZBA meetings as I can, and it's sometimes almost embarrassing, the information that's not given or given on time. It's a little embarrassing.
Well, I don't know where we go from here. I guess I can, I look, I look to Patrick. I say, Patrick, if, do you think the four of you together collectively can come up with a process by which we can stop this, you know, not getting the information on time? I don't know what it's going to look like, but I'm looking for an advisory recommendation that basically says, if we did this, this, and this, then we're going to be okay.
You know, I, I think we can put together a process, bring it back to the Planning Commission and to the ZBA, and obviously, the whole boards can look at it and give us their input. You know, I, I think some of these items aren't necessarily, and I'm not saying there hasn't been mistakes made, you know, and so forth, but I am going to say this, that not all of these are being generated by the township's fault. You know, we look at a case like McDonald's where there was recommendations-
Agreed.
Things that should have been done, they refused to do them. And yes, that expanded out the time process. B and D, or D and B, very similar. You know, it was a year and a half process, I believe, just to give them a ticket. So, you know, it wasn't like an overnight thing where the mean Pat Maher went out there and said, gee, I've given you a day, here's a ticket. So, you know, that's a gross exaggeration. I don't know what the timeframe was, so I didn't want to speak to it, but, you know, obviously, it was a long duration. And, so, but yes, the answer very simply is, I think we can get together and put together a process, present it to the Planning Commission and to the ZBA, and make any modifications that your groups feel necessary, and then proceed with it.
Okay. Does that meet with Mr. Supervisor's approval?
Yeah, I'm totally fine with it.
Okay, good. So, is that a motion that we have to make in order to approve that, or?
I don't know, do we?
No.
No. Okay, good.
We could though, if we wanted to.
Well, yeah, remember, the Planning Commission and ZBA are autonomous.
Exactly.
They're statutory bodies, which over, which this board really doesn't have any authority. So, so, say it a different way, over which this board really doesn't have any authority. You appointed people to sit on it, and they have rules that they have to follow.
Mm-hmm.
How they do their business really is up to the Planning Commission, the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Right, we do not answer to the supervisor.
And planning and zoning. That's why you don't go to their zoning Board of Appeals meetings and tell them how to vote.
Right.
Okay, that's why you appointed these autonomous committees. So you don't need any board action on this. Planning Director's already indicated that he's going to run-
So that's kind of why I said, no. They do not, he's, they do not report to the supervisor, like you just said, they're autonomous.
You are, you are autonomous. Once you're appointed, you have statutory duties that you have to follow.
Right.
Which means this board doesn't have any oversight over what you do.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item, 9.8, Treasury Report.
Yeah, I guess this, I guess this is on me also. I made a request at some of the previous board meetings about this summary sheet that, you know, as I get older, my eyes get worse and worse, that's why you see me flipping glasses on and off here. I still can't read that summary report, so I'm making a second request that I would like to have that summary report in some kind of fashion that, once the second or third generation of printing copies is somewhat legible. Also, from the June account, there's missing balances from Comerica Flagstar and Huntington. And the note up the top of the form basically said that you had not, Mr. Nicely, you had not received that information. So obviously, you can't give us information that you haven't received, and I fully expect that. But I'm, I'm curious as to, there's nine funds that, that are listed on this summary sheet, and there's also something, and I want to explore this a little bit more. So, the Comerica Flagstar and Huntington, and I'm going to probably defer this question to our attorney, how do we approve a, a financial statement when all of the information is not included in the statement? Can we approve it?
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure what financial statement you're approving. These are, these are Treasury reports, right?
Yeah, these are Treasury reports, correct. Right? So for the June one, the summary basically said that the information hadn't been received by the-
I get it.
From the banks, and so we're being asked to approve a, an incomplete Treasury Report, as far as I can tell. I just, I just don't, don't know what the liabilities are for us to do that.
I don't think there's, I don't think there's, number one, I don't, I don't know of any other, I shouldn't say that. A good number of townships I represent do not have a Treasurer's Report at the meeting. Treasurers do not make reports at, at the regular board meetings, at all. The Treasurers are responsible for statutory duties to do certain things. They don't report to the board on a monthly basis.
Wow, really?
Very, it's not uncommon at all. No, I mean, that's what the Treasurer's supposed to do. I mean, you don't need to submit a report to the board every month to say, here's my report. He's, he's an elected statutory official that has duties to take care of your money. So the fact that you've asked him to submit a report is great, but if, if you think it's incomplete, you don't, you certainly don't have to accept it, but there's no requirement that he submit it for board approval anyway. So I'm serious.
That's amazing, really.
Why?
Well, because as trustees, we're elected by the residents to make sure that everything is above board-
For sure.
And without having the information, how in the heck do you even keep track of what's going on?
There's no question about that, but the Treasurer has a statutory responsibility. You have an investment policy-
Mm-hmm.
That the board has approved.
Yep.
Your auditors have looked at it, they blessed it. There's rules that the Treasurer has to follow with the investment money that he makes. And, and he's not required on a monthly basis to say, here's, here's where all the money, I mean, you can, you can look at any given time where the money is. He's not required on a monthly basis to submit a report to you. Your auditors come in periodically, and certainly yearly, and do an audit, and they say these records accurately reflect the financial condition of the township. They give you a clean audit letter every single year, which means you can rely on the numbers that are here. We've done the audit, you know, whether, whether they tell you you're in good position or bad position, they don't tell you that, what they tell you is you can rely on these numbers. As long as I've been here, they've always done that.
Mm-hmm.
So what, what you get out of a monthly report, I don't know that, that's up to you, but apparently, whatever the Treasurer's office is doing gets blessed by your auditor every single year, and has for 40 years.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So I don't, I don't think there's any legal requirement that he submit or you accept a report.
Wow, that, that's a real surprise to me.
I, I can tell you, I was at a meeting of a community twice as large as you last night, and there's no Treasurer's Report. And it wasn't the month before, or the month before that.
The things you learn.
Yeah.
Interesting. Well, I guess it just sucked the fun out of my room.
Well, I mean, that's what the Treasurer's there for. I mean, you can't, everybody's, the three full-time officials have certain duties that they have to do. The clerks got them, the supervisors got them, the Treasurer's got them. Trustees, we meet twice a month to make policy decisions. You know, there's a point you can, you know, micromanage a department that's not the board's necessary responsibility. As trustees, you have a responsibility over township matters, of business, but, but that doesn't matter, that, that doesn't mean the board runs the Treasurer's Department. Treasurer runs Treasurer's Department. I mean, I'm trying to be flipped, but I'm telling you what the law is.
Okay.
I mean, you know.
Well, I guess I'm going to defer my questions to the other trustees then, to say, basically to reiterate what our attorneys have said, do we even bother to look at the Treasurer's Report anymore? Do we even want to put them in a board package? What's the point?
Well, you could do them quarterly. Some communities do it on a, on a quarterly basis. There are rural communities where you've got, you know, two entries a month, where the Treasurer, will always do a Treasurer's Report. You know, we, we had two entries in the last month. But in larger communities, where you've got 50, 60,000 residents, guarantee you, they do not have a Treasurer's Report every month.
Interesting, okay.
Some do, but, but I guarantee you all don't. I don't think it's up to the trustees. I'm going to continue doing it anyways, Gary.
Okay. Okay, well, I appreciate that, Mike, thanks.
Yeah.
And maybe the last question then is, what is a J fund?
Comerica has what they call a safekeeping account. Inside the safekeeping account has access where Robinson Capital goes into and pulls money out from the investments. The J fund account is the, is the category inside the J, inside the safekeeping account, just notified as, as a J account, so that's the account that holds the cash.
Mm-hmm.
So when he makes investments and sells investments, he'll put the money into the J fund account, pulls from the J fund account.
Okay.
It could have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 on there, it could have any account number on there, but it's just referred to as, and I don't know what, what the reference of J stands for, it's just the J fund account, I think it was internally when Linda was here, so that just carried over when I was, and that's, that's the money he goes in and accesses the accounts for.
Okay. And the cash, it's called cash, so you, I'm assuming it's cash. Where does the cash come from?
From the investments that he sells.
Okay, got it. Okay, I'm good.
And it sits there until he finds something else, and then he pulls it out.
Okay. Good, thank you.
And just a question, too, and you, and you normally pull your money together for all the different funds.
I'm sorry, what's that again, Mike?
You normally pull, pull the funds together.
Pool.
Pool.
No, we don't have any pool, we, the only pooled accounts we have is our Huntington Checking Account. That's a pooled account. The rest are all separate. So the pooled account includes the general fund, how we pay our bills, payroll, and everything like that. That's the only pooled account we have. Everything else is separated, so that's the only pooled account that we have.
Okay.
Is at Huntington. It was previously at Comerica, now it's at Huntington.
Okay.
I think I haven't indicated up there, too, what's pooled account or not.
You do.
Yes.
And that's, so this Huntington Securities, this is the new one? The one on the end here, Huntington, because that wasn't on the-
Correct, because when I, when I was asked to change the margins, I lost it, so.
So are, is this all the accounts we have that we're seeing right now?
That's, that's it, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, thank you.
Yeah, so. Any comments from audience? Then there's not, there's no motion, right?
No.
Item closed?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, next item, number 10, comments from audience.
Hello. My name is Polly Wilson. I live at 68239 Wingate Drive. I have been a citizen and business owner of Washington Township for over 30 years. I'm here today to welcome Joanne Moreno, who has been back there, as our new Washington Township Library Board member. She will do an excellent job. I am the past Library Board Member representative, and I was, I was not given an opportunity, and I was overlooked for a, for reappointment. I was given the re, my interest is reappointment as early as April 2021. Furthermore, I was never given the respect or even a thank you for the volunteer position I upheld for four years. Moving forward, I hope all of you can improve the process of the library appointee position. And finally, I do love where I live, I love our campground canopy, and I love our library, which has become a beacon for the residents of Washington Township, Bruce Township, and the Romeo Village. And I would like to end, for all of you who serve the community, a quote, "We cannot do all the good that the world needs, but the world needs all the good that we can do." Thank you for your time, and I would just like to add one more thing, a suggestion regarding public participation. Since I have experience from the Romeo School Board and, and the Romeo District Library, we always give our, our community, our residents, a time to speak in the beginning, so we do not have to wait for three and a half hours before we can give a chance to speak. And you can even, even, so that it doesn't, we even had a set time, 15 minutes, at the beginning of a meeting. I think that would be a kind thing that you do for the residents. Thank you.
Polly, I would like to thank you for serving on the RDL. There were three of us here sitting at, at this table that served on the RDL. We know how much of a thankless job it is, but we did it, and we did it well, so I do want to thank you. I've never seen you up here at the board before, so I've never had a chance to personally thank you, but thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Elizabeth Miller. I'm the President of the Romeo District Library Board. There's many things I'd like to say tonight, but I'm getting pretty sleepy, so I'll, I'll try to keep it brief. Holly Wilson has been an integral part, I just lost my notes, oh, here they are, was an integral part of the Romeo District Library for the past four years. She worked on a committee with Gary Cop when he was on our board for the archives, and the keys are branched, that it's become quite this successful enterprise that it is, and it's, it's well-loved by our community. We've had people from across the world using it remotely and so forth. She also served on the committee to hire our current director, who is an absolute gem, and we just approved her, her next year's contract last night at our board meeting. Three, three of you are sitting right here, Mr. Polod, Mr. Kowalski, Mr. Cop, you all sat on the Romeo District Library Board with me. And some of those were tumultuous times, and we thought, moving forward with this new board, with this new supervisor, that we didn't have to worry about any more shenanigans that might happen. And Mr. Vavetti, I'm very disappointed in the way in which you handled this matter. Our Director Claire-
I handled it correctly.
Our Director, I'm, I'm sorry, do I might-
No, I'm not interrupting.
Do I have a time limit? I just, I'd like to-
No, I'll give you all the time you want.
Okay, well, it won't, it won't be long. Our Director Claire Lepiccolo reached out to you in mid-April after our board meeting to say that, that Polly was interested in being reappointed, and you said, not a problem, one less thing for me to do. And then she heard nothing from you until June.
Yeah.
Um-
I'll let you talk.
At which time, a staff member on the Romeo District Library Board was watching your meeting a week and a half later to learn that someone else had been appointed, and we had no courtesy call, there was no courtesy to the Director, to myself as the Chair, to, to Mrs. Wilson, nothing. She had to find out, we finally got you to call her directly and let her know that, and she couldn't understand what she might have done wrong to not even be considered, to not even have her voice be heard here. Apparently, this is now water under the bridge, but it's, we're supposed to be a collaborative community, right? And I thought we had that. And we hope, moving forward, we can still have that. I heard, I'm sorry, ma'am, I forgot your name.
Me?
Cindy, right? Yeah, Wilson, is that correct? No.
Olson.
Olson, I'm sorry, Olson.
Wrong, wrong Cindy.
I heard you say a, a little bit ago that, that you were embarrassed by the lack of transparency with some of your other boards. I've communicated with a few of you in the last few days, and some with no, no return communication. I'm requested that this be put on the agenda, Mr. Babinski, you refused to put it on the agenda. Not to have this appointment, even a discussion point, it's, it's a lack of consideration. There's something on our board that we've talked about, and long time ago, when this board, even the previous board, and, and Mr. Seabird, you know, you led legal counsel for both lawsuits that went across, against the library that cost, the library alone, over $30,000 to defend that, in which the township lost both cases. And we, I came before this board in 2014, begging you to not sue the library, tell us what you've got, we don't want this lawsuit to happen, yet you did it anyways. And at that time, we, we talked about operating from a place of avoiding any appearance of impropriety. And when a community member doesn't have the opportunity to even have her voice be heard, or her opportunity to, to be reappointed as an incumbent who, who gave timelessly and selfishly to this community, it's, that, that Cindy is, that's embarrassing. It's embarrassing, just like what you mentioned before about what happens in, in some of your other boards. However, moving forward, we still want to have, obviously, collaborations. We have a wonderful District Library. Our Director does a phenomenal job, she has incredible staff, and the rest of our board is very professional. However this moves forward, we will, we will welcome Joanne and with, obviously, to our board, and we will be professional, and we will be courteous, and we will always have, be, be above board in what we do. However, there's, there's a little bit of a complication. What was interesting to me is your last board meeting, when this appointment was taking place, as three of you used to be on this, the board with me, neither, nobody could figure out, is it a three- or four-year term? But yet you sat on the board and questioned, it's a-
It's a four-year term. I'm not sure where you're coming with that.
It's a, may I please continue? Okay, thank you. So it was joked about, like, we don't know, is it three, is it four? Legal counsel, you, you knew District Library Law inside it out, because you advised on, on those lawsuits. So no one did it. It was a three-year term that you guys decided to appoint her. So at some point, it needs to be corrected for her appointment to be, to be valid, so that she can serve appropriately on our board. So I'm not sure how you're going to proceed with, with correcting that, but we've been in, in touch with, with Lansing, with our library, with the Library Law Attorney of Michigan, and it has, it's a four-year term, it's not a three-year term, per the District Library Agreement. I would hope, moving forward, and perhaps, Mr. Cop, you might be interested in this, I know that you enjoy committees and enjoy working on creating new policies and procedures, and I remember that from the board, how helpful you were with that, with the Romeo District Library. I think, moving forward, we've discovered that there's, there's a, we're missing something, new policies and procedures, and I remember that from the board, how helpful you were with that, with the Romeo District Library. I think, moving forward, we've discovered that there's, there's a, we're missing something. And what that is, is a procedure in which we can move forward and communicate with the boards, the various boards, of how someone could go about being reappointed. How can, what is expected of them? If you, do you expect them to come? Is there a policy or a procedure in place that lets them know that? Or is it just assumed they should show up, but, but you don't tell them what their, what the expectations are? So, I think what would, what would be helpful, moving forward, is maybe if we can create some sort of a procedure in which, when a trustee is, maybe when they're done, and they're just like, "I've enjoyed serving, but I'm not looking to be reappointed", a communication is sent to the, to the township. So, I'm not sure how we might work on that, but I think that might be something that might be helpful for all three communities moving forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience? Okay, I'd like to address that before anyone else. I want to let the board know, and those of you watching, that this has been brewing over the past several days regarding this library-appointed representative. Last month, we voted on Joanne Moreno to be our new library representative, and I want to inform the board and the public what conspired leading up to this, and what happened since that meeting, to be openly transparent. Number one, before I go on with my statement, though, I did thank Polly Wilson, both verbally and in email, so that was a blatant lie, but I'll move on. As you all are aware, I announced publicly that the representative position was coming to term, and we were accepting applications. If anyone in the public was interested at the two prior meetings, during the same time, I reached out to our current representative several times to verify if she had interest in continuing to serve or not. It is true, Claire did reach out to me, the library director, and told me that Claire was interested. I make it a personal policy not to appoint anyone or reappoint anyone without hearing from that person. It was, nothing was done in malice against Ms. Polly Wilson. I applaud her. In fact, I can imagine the amount of work she put in, and will forever be grateful for it. I did present Joanne Moreno, who was the only one who did apply for the position, enthusiastically, I might add, and excited to serve. But not only that, she did bring a branch, she brought a strong financial background, and also serves at the Starkweather Arts Center and her local parish, and recently has been retired, so she has the time to commit to this. It is true, the meeting was held on a Wednesday. I didn't notify the library board president or director for two days after the meeting to notify them of Joanne's appointment. And I called Polly Wilson to notify her as well, and thank her for her service, and she was understanding at that time, and did state she was traveling and never got back to me. Now, it's been over a week, and I have been told that there is a technicality by the library board, because we announced it as a three-year term and not a four-year term. I consulted with legal counsel, and he assured me that there is no technicality. I did sit down with Polly, the library director, and the library board president, and in person, and they expressed all the expertise and hard work Polly has done, which I do not doubt, but however, a vote is a vote. I want to state, I do love our library. I bring my kids there very often, and I do support our tri-community. I'm probably one of the biggest supporters out there. But I will not have our vote of this board be undermined, and our appointed representatives not respected by other appointees of other towns. The problem here does boil down to communication. I reached out to our representative several times. I didn't have to do that, because I make it a personal policy not to endorse anyone, as I stated before, without getting their approval first. I will not endorse someone who does not return a call or email, especially when they know their term is approaching. I applaud Polly Wilson for all her hard work, dedication, and passion to serve. This was not done in malice, as I said, against her in any way. But I represent this town, and I have to defend the vote of this board and the representatives we choose. I will say this now, publicly, for all board appointees, no matter what board or commission you serve on, it is your responsibility to notify me and the board if you have interest to continue to serve when your term is approaching. I am not a mind reader, and I will not recommend anyone to a board without verbal agreement at a minimum. I have spoken to Joanne Moreno, and she would like to continue to serve as our library board representative, and it is not fair to make her a political pawn in all this. So, I now ask all the other representatives of our tri-community to please welcome her to the library board at your next meeting. Change in trustees is not always welcome, because you do lose some of your knowledge and expertise, but it is not a monarchy, and we all have to play by the same rules. This board may agree or not agree 100% on tri-community, but this board respects the decisions of other tri-community members and their boards, so I expect the same respect back from our tri-community. With that, I'd like to make a motion to formally appoint Joanne Moreno to a four-year term as our representative to the library board of trustees. Do I have a second?
Second.
That's a motion by Pervidi, seconded by Babinski. Any questions on the motion? Roll call.
Pervidi.
Yes.
Babinski. Yes. Forgot who I was for a second. It's getting late. Olson.
Yes.
Nicely.
Yes.
Tautowski.
Yes.
Polod.
Yes.
And Kopp.
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. I apologize for everyone involved. I still don't think I did anything wrong. I, I know feelings are hurt, and again, nothing was done intentionally against anyone. But if I, I would have egg on my face if I nominated someone, and they turned around and they didn't want the position. So, if anything, this proves communication is key with everything. I don't know if anyone else has a comment?
Sure.
I'd like to say thank you, and I appreciate you handling the correction in the term tonight. That will make, moving forward, with Joanne, a lot easier. We met with her earlier today, and we really, and she'll, she'll make a great addition to our board. So, thank you for correcting that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Miller, if you could also, at your next board meeting, please make the correction that Joanne did not resign, as you had mentioned in your meeting yesterday.
Anyone else want to comment on that, or I can move on? Okay, I'll go into elected officials update. I'd like to start out by informing everyone that, about the huge rainfall we had last, well, a couple Fridays ago, June 25th, it was one of those one-in-25-year storms that hit our area. I want to thank our fire department. They were knee-deep in water, drenched, boots full of water, pumping water to divert it, and they were helping residents all night long, along with our DPW guys, working around the clock, manning all the pump stations, to ensure that they didn't burn out. I was there that night with Rich Armamino, our DPW director, and it was amazing, not only the hard work they all were doing, but the compassion and customer service that our fire department was showing to the residents. The following morning, I did convene an emergency department head meeting to evaluate the situation and areas of flooding, so we could provide a list to the county and to the engineering company to study and work on improvements on these sites. We did issue a NICSIL to inform the residents, along with updating our website for people to notify us of areas of flooding, and we have put together a list that DPW is working on with the county right now to correct. Earlier that same day, we held a ribbon ceremony at our fire department, Station 3. Despite the rain, we had a great turnout, so I want to thank all of you that came out. And a lot of the dignitaries came out. It was a huge success, despite all the rain that day. Also, our Washington Township Day was rained out at Jimmy John's Field. We have rescheduled that for Friday, August 27th, the second time in the history of Jimmy John, it's been rained out. So, there'll be fireworks that night. If you did purchase tickets, though, you will be honored that evening. If you haven't, and you'd like to purchase tickets, reference Washington Township, and you'll get the discount. We'll be posting that on our website on the next day or two. Let's see, I, I know most of you were updated. We did close on the Tanakir parcel on our industrial park a couple weeks ago, and we're looking forward to closing on the remaining parcels. We have been in the process of working on Plan Moran and our annual audit, which is going well, but it's taken a bit longer this year. Normally, they work on site, but due to COVID, the audit hasn't been, I mean, has been 100% remote. So, we're looking to hopefully wrap this up in the next few weeks before the September deadline. I'd like to call Mike Kozak up. He was with me and Rich Armamino on Monday, on the roadwork that we did have budgeted this year. We did have planned to pave Powell Road up to 32, and also working with the developer, MJC, to pave 30 Mile Road, and also repave West Road. And the good news is that these projects were accepted with the 60-40 program. The bad news is that they're pushing these projects to next year. So, I, I want to ask Mike to explain it better.
Any of them this year?
No.
I mean, I love Mike.
We have been working aggressively with the county to, give Sam credit, to very much, a lot of follow-up, staying on top of them, trying to understand kind of where these projects fall within the queue. They did confirm that those projects are on their list for next season's construction season, none of which would be done this year. They haven't even started design on them. They did provide us with more detailed preliminary estimates, I would say, for the cost of those paving projects. They're still kind of in line with, I think we went back and looked at what you guys had budgeted. Again, some of those were budgeted for this year's construction, and will just simply be pushed to the following year. Not a big deal, and those costs are still pretty much in line with what we had budgeted, no major differences, except for 30 Mile, which, as Sam mentioned, is a project that really kind of was spearheaded by MJC, who did the White Oaks development there with their secondary access driveway that comes off of 30 Mile. In an effort to help their own marketing and sales, they wanted to pave from mound to that entrance, Burrow Drive, I believe it's called, which is about three-quarters of the way down between mound and campground. So, it came before this board in kind of an informal way in the past, where there was a lot of numbers thrown around, a lot of different cost-sharing options. It's going to cost more than originally anticipated to pave that road, but no one really believes the estimates, because we think they're a little conservative. So, the long and the short of it is, I think, at the August meeting, we'll be bringing to you a cost-sharing agreement that will handle just the design of that, of the entire segment, which would go from mound to Kildare, so it's about a mile and a half, mile and three-quarters. The, that design cost will be shared basically a third of the way between the township, MJC, and the county. Get that design done, get some bid numbers out of it, and have a better understanding of what kind of number are we talking about overall, and then everyone can decide, how do we fund that? Whether the township wants to participate at all, whether or not MJC just wants to do their portion of it as their own project and go through the permits department separately, the design will be done at that point, and they will have shared in that cost. So, it's a long way of getting around to that, that will bring something back in August. We think we have kind of a roadmap to get there, but it's still at least a year off to be realistic at this point, so.
I mean, if you want to explain, like, that design would be good.
Yeah, it can sit on the shelf for a few years. If all of a sudden, there's federal dollars that trickle down, that can be used for road projects, that's a shovel-ready project that literally will be right there and ready to go to pave. It's not like you're going to be just throwing that money away if you decide not to move forward with the project. I, I think MJC's committed, at a minimum, to do, to get their portion done in some manner or another. And then it starts to be a, kind of economy's a scale, do you just pave the rest of it and get it all done as a good east-west connector there? So, county's been great to work with. It's just, you know, I think they have a lot on their plate. They're trying to process dollars that are maybe going to be there, not there, and make all of that work at the same time, so.
Mike, when you say West Road-
West Road would be-
I want to talk about West Road. We're talking about-
Well, no.
Tell me about which West Road we're talking about.
Basically, from Van Dyke to Washington Elevator.
Yeah.
That's it? Not to mound?
Let's get, we can get, let's get-
Really?
It'd be a resurfacing project, remove and replace three inches or something like that of the asphalt, the new surface.
That's a start. Only one lane, too.
It's going to be very narrow.
The middle, the middle.
But yeah, that one is on the list for next year.
You've got to save something for the next day, Gabe.
Yeah, give you something to work on. Good, okay, well, good.
That's all I know.
Better than guys.
I mean, we're kind of hoping to, 30 Mile can kind of maybe would pick up a lot of traffic, because a lot of people are going south on mound to 28 to the expressway. Maybe they would take 30 Mile to the expressway. 28 wouldn't be such a bad.
Maybe we need to throw in a few speed bumps in there, too.
Yeah, I know.
I'll tell you, the-
Well, we got a few now.
Couple weeks ago, going on mound road, coming up to the intersection, the guy passed me going through the intersection. And then, the other day, I was-
That was Mike.
No, it wasn't Mike. It wasn't Mike, because the guy, you know, he had just had a haircut. That's how I knew. Right? But the other day, just coming up Van Dyke here, pulling into the ice cream parlor, this lady passes me in the center lane, and it's like, are you kidding me? So, I hope we write a lot of tickets out there.
Same experience, right in front of the township, Paul. People were flying down the middle lane, 60 miles an hour.
Except for us, we can't pull out.
Yeah, you can't pull out.
Can't get out.
Stan is in the process of, we're working on the American Rescue Plan. From having no stipulations, now we have to go online, fill out forms, and he's working on that. I think the deadline's July 27th.
27th, we got to have it in.
So.
Depends on which story you want to believe that they tell you. It's, don't have to qualify, do anything right now, or if it just puts something in saying you're wishing for it. So, Patrick, Maher, and Heidi, and I will all be working on that project.
And then, obviously, the board knows, for the public, we are still working on the updated articles of incorporation and bylaws of our joint Parks and Rec. We held an internal workshop a couple weeks ago for our board, and last week, a joint meeting with Bruce on this. Most of the items were worked out. We plan to meet again in the next two weeks or so, once we solidify a date, to work on the remaining open items. I did want to bring it back to the board. We did discuss putting out a survey to the residents. I know today we kind of talked about it. You guys, did you like the questions we asked? Do you think it's still, we should do it? We were, we were playing around with rough numbers for cost.
Yeah.
We said around $15,000.
$1,500, wasn't it?
No.
The post, the postage, postage itself in the zip code of 48094, that's the only one that I pulled up. And you can pull up under every door direct, under the USPS website, and click where you want these to be delivered to. So, I didn't do 48095, which is another $1,100. But 48094 was roughly 80, 8800 households that would be sent to. Postage alone, one way, is about $1,700. If we want to get the replies back on these, it's going to cost double, because you got to, if we're going to get a self-return on, then it's going to double that amount. That doesn't include the artwork that needs to be done, the postage, and when you get things perforated on a mailer, they're more expensive. So, we know at a minimum, rounding up, you're looking at $2,000 for postage, or excuse me, let's say $4,000 for postage, because you got to double it, and whatever you have to do in your target audience. So, that's the high cost on the postage side of that.
But what about 48095?
48095 had $1,100 in there, but I didn't, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't get the dollar amount in there. So, that's why I said, if it's $4,000 for postage, one there, one back, that's on, probably on the high side.
0652, a little bit, too.
But it's something to, to budget or look at, including artwork and/or delivery to the post office and everything like that.
I'm wondering if we're doing the right thing, then?
We had talked about, we had talked about that earlier today, if it's too late to do, because what we're asking is, do you want to have one Parks and Rec, or do you want to have multiple? Since we're already this far into the process of the articles incorporation, we had talked about maybe holding off on that until the articles are done, and then, and then move forward with a different Parks and Rec survey. Send one out and say, 50% want yes, or 50% want no, and then we already signed the document. It does no good. So.
Or we don't sign the document. We can go either way, right?
Right, but we have to do this done by September 1st, based upon the board agreement that we did for the budgets for the Parks and Rec. So, to get these out in the mail and get these done by September 1st is not going to happen. I'm more inclined just to pause the survey at this point. Let's try to get the documents done on an agreement from all the parties, and then let's work on a good, solid survey to find out what the residents are actually looking for with services and amenities that they're looking for. But that's just one opinion. I can't speak for everybody else. But cost-wise and time-wise, it's not going to work for September 1st, and trying to get these back in the, out in the mail, and back in, back in Greg Meem's office in a timely manner.
Again, I'd look at it, from what Mike had said, in the perspective, and again, just mailers in general, it's like a one-and-a-half to 3% return, that those flyers that you get in the newspapers, that's all they get. So, are we going to expect a one-and-a-half to 3% return on what we're getting? Are we really getting an answer of what the public really wants? I don't think it's there. But that's just, again, my opinion. If we vote the other way, I'm all in favor of that, too.
It'd almost be better standing off, standing in front of Krogers or-
Pretty much.
Or Myers here, and what's a survey board?
They're volunteering.
Sign us and answer four questions, yes or no?
What we did at the library, when I was on there, we did a survey, but it was a phone survey, but it was like $14,000. And they keep calling until they get the right demographics. That means they talk to a woman, they talk to a man, they talk in certain age groups, and then they ask all those questions. So, a phone survey would be, will get, definitely get you the right number statistically for what you need, but it's going to be a lot more money.
You know, I think we tried to do this to include the public, but I think the public has made it clear that they elected us to make these decisions.
I agree with that.
So, I guess for now, we'll put that on a pause. I guess that's all I have of, I don't know if you got-
I've got community announcements.
So, again, elections coming up in August. We could still use a few volunteers to help over there. Again, there is pay on some of the positions, so if you're interested in learning a little bit more about the elections and want to do it, you know, Cindy said on the, and the first, and Mike, both sat on our committee meeting and got some things done. We just did the testing the other day on the machines. Approximately 4,000 ballots went out, and I think I mentioned this last meeting, I can't remember what I did last meeting, but we did go to bulk mailing, and that saved us approximately $3,000 on that. So, now, the ones that are remaining get sent out first class. But again, we have a cost savings of about $3,000. Just so you know, ballots have been returned, and we've got about 2,000 of them already back. So, still have people coming in, dropping off their requests for their ballots and things of that nature, but we're caught up, we're feeling good about where we're at. things of that nature, but we're caught up, we're feeling good about where we're at, and...
So any resident who's interested, where should they call, email, et cetera?
Contact the Clerk's Department. We'll get you set up over there. There's an application you fill out, so.
So just call the Township Hall.
Yep.
Clerk's Department.
If you want to go, extension five, then number one after that.
So you're looking for election inspectors?
Yep.
Okay. It's a fun, it's a fun job. You meet, you meet new people, and it's a-
Standby's pizza for everyone.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm going to cut the slices again, so. You get 16 pieces out of a pizza.
And that's a small.
Other small things on here, I wanted to thank Bo Shirt Kitchen and Bath. They had donated their display model of kitchen to here at WBRW, so now they have a more formal-looking kitchen in which they can do shoots of their cooking shows and things here, instead of having to go off-site. I don't know if they're using it as a kitchen kitchen per se, but it does look more like a kitchen, other than cabinet or two that sit over there. So I can thank them for that donation of getting that put over here and everything else, so.
Once they get the plumbing hooked up, they'll be ready to go.
Eric, what's, what's, what's the first meal we're going to have?
You're buying, dude.
You guys know how to make chili.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Again, I don't know if it's the community announces, but it is an announcement that got passed on from me. Michigan.gov/mishda, or you can call the county at 586-469-7900, is offering renters and utility payments from COVID. So if there's issues that you're having, where you had some payments where you were behind, they will help out with that. Again, there's an application and things that you apply. On that site, there's also, for those landlords that may have had suffered some time in which they weren't collecting any rent from anybody, because there were a moratorium put on that as well. So just want to put that out there. I know there's a couple families that I have dealt with through the club that suffered greatly during that time, and we did find other sources before this became available to help them out. So I just want to let people know that it's out there. And then I'll save the other two for community announcements.
Did you guys want to say anything?
I'd just say one thing. As far as community appointments, I think it'd be better to have it on the main website, because I know it's under years, but it'd be more transparent for everyone to see the website, and then they can apply that.
Yeah, I could put a link or put it on the main.
Oh, you did put it on there?
No, no, I said I can.
Oh, okay. Because I think that would be a good idea, because sometimes people-
Yeah, I'd put it out there just so if an appointment, I mean, an opening does happen, at least I have some names.
Oh, okay.
But yeah, no, no, we could do that. I have a couple community announcements.
Yep.
Where you got correspondence before that.
Got correspondence? Tomorrow, July 15, is the concert at the park at Washington Township. This weekend is the quilt show at the Actagon House, the 17th and 18th. August 27, as I said, is our Washington night at Jimmy John's Field. And August 6, the Romeo/Washington Chamber of Commerce will be having their Night Under the Stars at 6 o'clock. I think, September 14 is the Romeo/Washington Chamber Golf Hauling, and then I think you were going to announce hazardous waste.
Yep.
I'll let you say it.
Okay. So we have the hazardous waste coming up, as we talked about hazardous wastes today and the trash haulers. August 14, from 9:00 AM till 1:00 PM, that will be again at Township Hall. It's a busy time. There's a whole list, if you want. I think that's on the website as well. I'm not going to read all these, what is acceptable and not acceptable regarding the hazardous waste, but it is only hazardous waste, it's not paper shredding or electronics, so.
What time is that?
From 9:00 AM till 1:00 PM. And again, looking for volunteers from the board.
Well, this is 9:00 to 1:00 this time. Last time was 9:00.
That's an hour later.
Yep.
You buying pizza?
That's, I know. Same kind you get.
Alex, you should be in Charleston visiting my grandson.
If you can't make it to 9:00 to 1:00, please don't leave it on the front porch.
Or afterwards.
We found all the paper shredding after the event.
Do you have any more you want? I've got one more. So we've heard wind that the Lions Club's looking at doing some type of winter's fest, and Parks and Recreation will be involved when it. I've asked a couple members at the Washington Lions Club to reach out to us, give a presentation, let us know what's going on there. Because of COVID and all the other things that are going on, lack of having a Super Sunday, lack of having chicken barbecues and all those other things, and fireworks that we used to have, it might be an opportunity that we can contribute some fashion to create an event for the winner for the residents to attend, and also help out the Lions Club as they create a fundraiser. So I just want to put that in the back of your minds, and then if we can get them out here and give us more details, that would be great.
And then I've got one. The Romeo football team is selling raffles for their annual golf fundraising. It goes to two, 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 the proceeds go to two portions of it. One's, half of it goes to the Romeo football team, the second half goes to the watchdog football game. Last year, they raised over $1,300, so six, roughly $675, $650 went to the Romeo team, and $650 of the other half went to the cancer fundraising. And it's a golf outing at Greystone Golf Course on August 14. If you want to buy tickets, they're a dollar a ticket, $6, or six tickets are $5, 13 tickets are $10, $27 or $20. And you can call Gary, E-L-L-E, at 586-219-5867. He'll be glad to help you out.
Is it E-L-L-E, did you say?
Yes, sir.
Ellie? Okay. That is the golf outing, also the red and white scrimmage that day as well?
I think it is, 14.
I think so, too. Normally, they have it on the same day, so.
They do, but I don't have the date on it yet, so that's why I didn't say it.
If there's nothing else, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session for the discussion of connect with the negotiation of collective bargaining agreement pursuant to Section 8C of the Open Meetings Act.
I have a question. What contract are we in the midst of negotiating right now?
Can I?
Yeah.
I can say it.
Yeah.
Oh. You have to, I mean, you know, last time I indicated that you can go, the Open Meetings Act allows you to go into closed session for collective bargaining, but you might either have to be in collective bargaining, or collective bargaining is just beginning to start. And I knew this was going to come again, because we did this last time. I looked at some Court of Appeals decisions, and they make it quite clear that you have to be in collective bargaining, or you are in the doorsteps of starting collective bargaining. So it's a fair question to know which contract.
Okay. It's regarding the Fire Department Union contract.
So are we opening up a contract?
No.
So then there's no need to have a closed session, then?
So I can just talk about why I want to go into?
Well, look, the reason the Open Meetings Act allows you to go into closed session to talk about collective bargaining is because you want to, it's for purposes of strategy in collective bargaining, obviously. And you want to be able to go into closed session to talk about what your game plan is when you start negotiations, or you're in negotiations. But, but this contract, as we've talked about last time, doesn't, is good until March 31 of 2023. So you've got at least 18 months before it's going. That does not mean that the parties could not open up the contract to negotiate certain things, but you have to either be in those negotiations or on the doorstep of starting them. I'm not privy to any of that. I'm not aware of it. We, Sam and I had this discussion yesterday about this. If it's going on, I don't know about it, but that doesn't mean it's not. I just don't know that. If it is, it's fair game to go into closed. If it's not, it's not a permissible closed session, so.
So that's a question, then. Are we in negotiations with anybody at this point?
No.
Are we beginning to discuss negotiations with anybody at this point?
No.
Okay.
We have a situation that could affect the contract, and I'd like to go into closed session to discuss it, because the overtime and the mandatory hours are through the roof, and we have a fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers to control that overtime and mandatory hours. So I'd like to go in the closed session and discuss it.
Yeah, that, that's not, that's not-
Which will affect the contract.
Yeah, but there's a lot of things that could affect the contract.
Okay, well, then we'll talk about it, no?
Okay, well, it's not an agenda item to do.
You don't need an agenda, you said. You posted our meeting.
Let me just finish my thought. You can certainly amend it and add it and go on and talk about it. But we had this discussion the other day. I was leery about going into closed session for this purpose. If you want to talk about overtime in the Fire Department, it's a legitimate board discussion, but it has to happen in open.
And I think that's a personnel manager more than a board decision.
Actually, I have the chief's contract here, and there are several things that he needs to report back to the board based upon the contract. The first one, and I'm just going through the couple of them over here, is providing oversight and maintenance of the daily operations and functions of the Washington Township Fire Department. Ensuring availability of sufficient staff to meet fire suppression needs by reviewing and approving vacation and overtime schedules, as well as assigning and transferring personnel as required to the efficient operation of the department, which I think he wants to also address. Meeting with administrative staff, community groups, and township management to assist in the analysis and identification of trends for short and long-term planning efforts to determine the needs of the community, so he has concerns about that. Preparing a preliminary and final annual final, or Fire Department budget for review by the Personnel Committee, monitoring the annual Fire Department budget to ensure the department expenditures fall within budget's constraints, which they are not because of overtime. Some of these fire guys are going to make more money at overtime than they will with their salary. And the last on here, on a number of different items, is assuming responsibility for the development, application, and enforcement of Fire Department standard operating procedures and guidelines, which could be suffering because of the issues that are going on within the Fire Department. So he has the, he has a right, under the contract, to approach the board with each one of these items here.
And I suggest he become an agenda item on the next meeting.
But the way, if I'm interpreting what Bob is saying, again, that's a personnel manager that has to be done internally.
Oh, I can fix the problem tomorrow, myself, I know.
And there are solutions out there, but-
I don't know if people will like the-
Did you want to finish your sentence? Fix the problem tomorrow, how?
I can't, I can't.
You can't say.
I can sing closed session.
Supervisor, can I approach?
Yes, please.
Thanks again. What a, what a marathon tonight, right? You've worked through a heck of an agenda. So I'm going to choose my words carefully. I have a lot of respect for everyone here. I've had some conversations. I'm doing my job, you know, contractually, right, but really just for the love of this community and this department. So this is what I ask. And you're right, it's a personnel management issue, and there's some issues that, you know, we're out of our control, whether they're long-term disability on the job, injuries, working scuff, whatever. We have the skill sets, and I got the knowledge to navigate through that. This is what I'm going to ask this board. You know, don't, don't bring my department into the political pawn and use us for any agenda. I have worked really hard over the last several years, as long as many of you have known me, to keep us apolitical, nonpartisan, head-down, mission-ready. I am totally good with whatever this board decides to do. But do not, please, with all due respect, don't put a closed session on an agenda twice and have me sit through this meeting just to have it voted down. I can handle it, but I worry about the public perception of my organization. The first time I heard legal counselors, you know, talk about that tonight, was the first time I've heard it. So it makes perfect sense. I, I'm good, I buy it, we're off and running. I just wanted to know if there was an appetite to help fix the problem before it worsens. That's all, that's all I needed. I really had that message last meeting, right, two weeks ago. But it was put back on the agenda, I respected that, I'm here just to find out that we're not even going to get into the closed session to have any conversation, because perhaps it's just not legally appropriate. I'm good. Just bear in mind, you know, what we represent and how, like, much community equity we built in this organization. Do not use this Fire Department in any way, shape, or form, other than the way we're intended. And that's our mission, our core values, okay? And please respect my time. I think any one of you maybe could have let me know earlier that this wasn't going to happen. And I think any one of you maybe could have let me know two weeks ago, as I sat through about the same duration of a meeting. I think I deserve that, and my team definitely deserves that. And I thank you for that, I thank you for your time, and I hope I didn't offend anyone. Because, listen, we have a lot of incredible work to do. I'm excited for our future. We've got a strong strategic plan, we've got an incredible team, we've got a growing community that, at the time, is outgrowing our capabilities a little bit, but we're going to get through this. We're still going to end up a leading, like, high-performing and high-end organization. I have no concerns. And I need the synergy, you've heard this from me, I need a synergistic relationship with this board to help us get where we want to be. We're going to do it. Just be cognizant and respectful of our time and our perception, and my position. Fair? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Chief?
So the motion I made, and he seconded, just don't do it.
Well, I-
I'm just saying, there was a motion on the floor, that's what I-
There was a motion on the floor to go into closed session. I told you the reason you could go into closed session. There were questions asked whether we were in collective bargaining, and I think you acknowledged that you can't meet the standard. And based on that, if it's an overtime issue, that's not collective bargaining, that's,